Good evening. Gave you the thumbs up.
Thumbs up. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us this evening. I'm going to call a meeting to order. Before we rise for the pledge, I just want to talk a little bit about the unfortunate events that occurred beginning 2:50 in the afternoon last Monday. Cowardice attack by two terrorists upon the city of Boston, the residents of Massachusetts, and all over the world. I wish for us to recognize the three civilians who were murdered by these cowards, Crystal Campbell from Medford, Lindsey Liu, the BU student, eight-year-old Martin Richard. They chose Patriots' Day of all days to carry out this act, heinous act as it was. They went on from there to then, my understanding is, actually execute 26-year-old MIT police officer Sean Collier with no rhyme or reason to it. From there, as they led into Watertown, throwing bombs and grenades at law enforcement officers who tried to capture them, they then mortally wounded MBTA Officer Richard Donahue, who is in very, very serious shape at Mount Auburn Hospital. I'd like us to remember those, folks who have lost their lives. Officer Donahue is in serious condition. All the civilians who have suffered traumatic physical injury that are in hospitals throughout the city of Boston who have lost limbs will never be the same ever again. For those that witnessed those events, who probably today don't know, but in later days and years to come may suffer psychological injury as a result of what they witnessed on that occasion. I never thought that I would see this in this country again, certainly not in the state of Massachusetts or in the city of Boston. Although those two cowards may have rocked our safety and security on that one day, I think it'd just make us stronger, more vigilant as we move forward. They will never take our freedom away, something they don't understand. I'd also like for us to recognize there were three North Reading police officers who were part of NEMLEC. NEMLEC stands for the Northeastern Massachusetts Law Enforcement Council. We had Sergeant Joseph Thibodeau, Detective Paul Dorsey, and Police Officer Sean O'Leary, who were part of this tactical unit. Sergeant Thibodeau and Detective Dorsey were on 12- to 16- to 18-hour shifts beginning Monday afternoon through Friday evening. Sean O'Leary joined the force on Friday when the second coward was finally captured and his being brought to justice began. Paul Dorsey was to the right of that boat. Sean O'Leary was to the left rear of that boat. Those are our own North Reading police officers who have dedicated their time to that particular tactical unit. So, I wish to thank them for their service and their part in bringing that one coward to justice. Also, want the community to know that this board, along with the town administrator, on next Monday evening, in this room at 6:00 PM, we are going to honor those three North Reading police officers. We're also going to recognize any North Reading resident that ran in the Boston Marathon last week, any first responder who rendered aid, whether it was a licensed first responder or just a civilian that was there who ran towards that danger and assisted, in all likelihood, saved many, many lives last Monday. Any doctor or nurse who rented aid through the hospital. And any law enforcement officer who's a resident in North Reading that participated in any of the events that began last Monday and concluded last Friday evening. So that'll be here at 6 o'clock next Monday evening. I invite the public to come out and join this board and the town administrator as we honor our own officers and recognize anyone else that participated in those events. Thank you. Now I would call for a moment of silence. Please rise and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Actually.
Chairman Delaney.
I want to skip down to gender, item six, if the board is in agreement. We have a guest member of the Board of Selectmen from the town of Reading. This is the issue pertaining to the hiring process related to the next director of RMLD. Mr. Arena, would you like to join us either at the podium or at one of these front tables?
This is fine. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman Delaney, for hearing me.
Question. Thank you.
My name is John Arena. I'm vice chair of the Board of Selectmen of the town of Reading. I approached the board by writing as a private citizen to make you aware of some of the activities at RMLD, which has recently had its chief executive, its director retire, and interim acting director named to that post. This was in the month of February. In the month of March, with a new board in place, the board elected to essentially ask that interim acting to step down and be replaced with what was described at the time as a rotating triad of three individuals that would serve for some number of months and then rotate out. There are two issues on the floor. The first is procedurally, according to town bylaw, one cannot leave a director, a town manager, without due diligence, that is, a hearing and a process for an appeal, neither of which was provided. The second issue is, you might imagine, that any organization that depends on leadership depends on the skills, the capabilities, the knowledge of the individual. And I can't think of anything more destructive and leading to confusion than a circumstance where three individuals are, in a round robin fashion, led to serve in a role. It gives rise to confusion over who's in charge. It gives rise over to who's responsible if an event on Watch A is found to be a problem on Watch B. Wednesday night at 7:00 in Ash Street in Reading, the Reading Municipal Light Board will meet again at 7:00. And just as last year, when I approached this board at the time to raise the issue of the renewable energy certificates, I'm urging this board again to show, as Mr. Prisco did two weeks ago, to show and speak about these recent events and let your thoughts be heard. North Reading is a customer of RMLD, as is Reading, and my interest here is in supporting my town, namely, the municipal enterprise, RMLD. To the degree we keep our customers happy, it remains an enterprising and profitable entity within the town. I'm concerned about the effect this might have on either the organization's efficiency or its cohesion. And, again, I don't know what the intent of the board was when this motion was made, but I've not seen any other organization, to my knowledge, ever construct itself in this way. Further, we have two brand-new board members, so there isn't necessarily strong presidential leadership on the board. You have two people that are relatively new to the role, and they may not understand the comings and goings of how these things are set up. Some of this might be explained in that form as well. I'll take any questions. Otherwise, I'll let you get back on dear.
Mr. Masari.
Could you just explain how the board directors or the board members of the Reading Light are appointed?
They're elected. So this past election, two seats were up for -- the members vacated the seats. Three people ran. Two were put in place. One of the individuals who was elected to board this selectmen with me was actually the third commissioner, so in the process of vacating her seat, a seat opened up as a byproduct. So there's actually an open seat at the moment. We'll have a hearing in a few more weeks to entertain appointments to that, but it's an elected role.
Is that a joint appointment with the remaining members of Reading Municipal?
It would be, yes. It would be, yes. So there are, at the moment, nine, five on the Board of Selectmen, four out of five on the RMLD commissioners that would nominate that individual.
Excuse me, just as a matter of information, is Ms. West, who was the one who just got elected to TBO?
Correct. Marcy West was elected to the.
What was her position on the interim director and the round robin?
In the month of March, where this came up, where Marcy was still a sitting selectman, she voted strongly against it, and 3-2 the matter went down.
As a member of the RMLD?
Correct. When she served as a member of the Board of Commissioners, she voted strongly against it. In her absence and with the other changes on the board, the board voted in favor of it. There's a couple of issues there. It's actually technically a vote for reconsideration. You need to have an appeal from the winning side. None was made, so you've got another discontinuity there. But my issue is more the, I don't know how you run an organization with three bosses, particularly when that seat gets emptied every three months and somebody else new occupies the seat. The stated intent was prudent. The stated intent was to give leadership access and visibility to subordinates. And you do that by having an assistant manager, somebody who can sit in on an occasional basis or can learn through substitution. But you don't do that, I don't think, by putting -- it's almost as if you guys decided to reorganize every meeting. Anyway, I'd urge you to be there two nights from now, Wednesday at 7:00. I'll be there as well. And if you have contacts on the other boards, in Wilmington and Lynnfield, that you have personal contacts, so reach out to Mr. Prisco because of our prior relationship with Mr. Delaney, I'd urge you to reach out and encourage them to show as well.
Mr. Prisco?
Yeah, I just, as Mr. Arena pointed out, I did attend the meeting a few weeks ago, and I put together a little white paper, and I emailed that off to all the board members, so hopefully you had a chance to see it. And the reason why I attended the meeting was John Norton, who's on the CAB, CAB?
Correct.
On behalf of North Reading, had been keeping me up to speed. His concerns were getting greater and greater as now the new leadership is in place. So he had asked me to attend and try to speak on behalf of North Reading and bring his views forward about his concerns regarding this rotating interim position. I did try to do that. The new chairman actually knew that evening.
That was his first evening after appointment.
Mr. Stempak. So I asked a few questions. I was trying to just get a little information of why they were making this decision. Probably about a third way through the process, he just stopped me and would not allow me to continue to ask any more questions. It was quite rude, I felt, and I definitely was treated with a lot of disrespect. And he didn't quite care to hear the North Reading's position on this. So I think it is important, if we have a few members that could attend on Wednesday, it would be helpful, because he really is not interested in hearing what our opinion is or how we feel, how the process should work, or how it could even affect us as a town. And I tried to talk to him about that, about the continuity. You know, we actually had a very devastating event come on, a hurricane of some sort. You know, prior, Mr. Campbell was very easy to get a hold of. Greg could probably call him personally. He probably had his cell phone number. If we have a rotating interim manager like that, who do we call when we have a serious situation? We also, Mr. Valiconas had two requests that I had written up a letter, sent to Mr. Campbell on your behalf, trying to improve the process when we have an emergency and where RMLD needs to come in and help us out during our emergency times. We were working on those things. Now they've all kind of slipped away. We don't know where they are in the process anymore. So, I didn't get anywhere. I definitely was disrespected. I definitely didn't get my opportunity to sit at that desk and ask the questions. And Mr. Heck.
Heck and Black.
He also came in, and he was trying to, more from a procedural point of view, to try to show the chairman where he went wrong, where they really didn't follow the Robert's Rules of Order, where they didn't follow town charter. And the chairman also, I think, shut him off as well and didn't quite frankly, didn't even really appreciate what he was getting from the town manager. So you get the sense here that this new leadership really just wants to follow their own path, and they're really not interested in the feedback of the users like us. So I ask you and encourage you to please participate.
Thank you, Mr. Prisco. Mr. Masari.
When's the timeline for filling the position?
It'll probably happen. It's not been announced, but I think it would probably happen in the next four weeks.
Well, let me add to that, because it's probably important.
Parma.
Finish, Michael.
Okay.
I'm confused. Are you talking about the interim position?
Sorry. I thought you meant the open board seat. My apologies.
No, no.
I thought that's what you meant.
My understanding is that there was at least one other candidate in the queue that, post this announcement, post the announcement of going to this rotating scheme, removed their name from consideration. So at the present time, I think they have an ambition to fill this by June. I can't say with certainty. I don't speak with authority on where they are in the process.
Does the rotation end once they fill the position permanently?
Now you're into it. I mean, my other objection is, none of the bylaws and language that comprehends a single executive, it's impossible to interpret when you have three. The language isn't written in a way that lets you say, okay, now that you have three, this is how you behave. It hasn't been rippled through the rest of the language. So, one would say it would, by virtue of interim assignments, they're over when the final choice is made. I presume it would be here as well.
The process, though, they actually went out and hired a firm to do the research, right, to collect some resumes?
Correct.
And they were in that process. And I believe they actually had about six applicants. So, but those six applicants are not going to have that same opportunity to rotate in. They're only using internal people, and I think there was three at the time internally as well, to rotate through that seat. And then you've got the other six applicants. I may have it wrong. It may be the six. So, that, which is another concern I had. So you have people that don't work within RMLD, not having the same opportunities to sort of be part of this whole interim process, which to me, I voiced was, well, if I was competing for this job, it kind of seemed a little unfair, using that process.
I guess. I'm very confused.
I know.
It would seem to me, if the board decides in the interim while they are out searching for someone to take over the job, that they're going to rotate. I can understand, not necessarily in support of it, but I can understand.
Sure.
What they're doing. But it would seem to me their intent has to be to hire someone to take over their role. And then their board members, they're not the manager of the.
Correct. There's a nuance here I may have glossed over. In February, Mr. Kevin Sullivan was named acting interim. That's done. He's nominated. He's in. In March, a motion was made to have him step down, without the hearing, without the due process.
That was on April 15th.
That failed. On April 15th, it came up again. Yeah, so. Anyway, you have a full agenda tonight.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
Are the three people who are employees of RMLD who are doing a rotating, are they applicants for the job?
I don't know the details. I'm more here on the procedural and the managerial implications.
Thank you.
So. I've copied the board on email. If you have any questions, by all means, get ahold of me. I'm happy to respond. So, North Reading and Reading have a common history in many ways. I can look around the table and see we have common interests as well. So, thank you very much.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Glad to tell me today.
Nice to see you. I'd like to go back to item five, meeting with our town clerk, Mrs. Stats, to discuss the election, which is a week from tomorrow, on April 30th. We have multiple ballots and all sorts of fun, Robert.
All sorts of fun. All sorts of fun. But I think it'll be well-received, and I think it'll go very smoothly. So I'm going to try to hold this up. Just as a reminder, this is just a kind of a brief outline that went in the transcript this week, and it'll be in the transcript again, just kind of outlining the procedure. As the public may or may not be aware, that this board did vote to combine our annual town election with the special state primary on April 30th, and rather than holding the annual town election one week later, under a provision, provided under a law, Chapter Two of the Acts of 2013, that allowed any community that had an annual town election within 30 days of either the special state primary or the special state election to hold them together. And so that is what this board did, and we were all in agreement with that. So, these two elections, to the public, I think, will be seamless. They will be as one. The voters will just come in. You will check in at the same check-in table that you normally do at your regular precinct. You will see two check-in people there, as you normally do at your regular precinct. The only difference is that one check-in person will be handling the town election. That will be the first person seated. And the other check-in person will be handling the special state primary. So, for the purposes of a voter walking in, there's no extra movement on their part. They walk through. You can vote at either or both elections. You're not bound to vote at both, so if you have a particular interest in only one, whether it's the town election or the primary, you can choose to just vote at one, or you can vote at both. And why not take advantage of the twofer and get more bang for your buck and cast a ballot at both, is my feeling. So the tables will be clearly marked as to which person is the checker for the annual election and which one is the checker for the state primary. And, as I said, the first checker will be for the annual election, because that is just one ballot. It is a ballot with all of our town offices on it for selectmen, moderator, school committee, CPC, and housing authority. And so there is one ballot for every voter in North Reading. So that one will just be a quick check-in, and you receive the ballot. The second checker will handle the primary, and that one is for all persons who are registered as Democrat, Republican, or unenrolled by April 10th. And that's where a voter has to choose a ballot. So that's why we're making that the second check-in station, just to keep the line moving a little bit fluidly. So at that check-in station, a voter would either choose a Democrat or a Republican ballot. If they're registered in one of these parties, they will be given that ballot. And if they are an unenrolled voter, they need to make the choice as to which party ballot they want. And the voting lists are marked appropriately. At the conclusion, the voter does not change their party status from unenrolled to the particular ballot, the party representing the ballot they chose. They do revert back to unenrolled status, so there's no change, just as any primary these days. It's been that way, excuse me, for a number of years. So the voter will take both ballots and go to their regular voting booth and mark both of them, and then follow the same procedures when they check out. They'll go to the first voting list. If they have chosen two ballots, they'll go to the first checker and check out from the town election, and then just move sideways to the second checker and check out for the state primary. Both ballots get deposited in the same tabulator, one at a time. That's all we ask, is that they put one in, wait five seconds, and put the other one in. The tabulator is programmed to read all ballots from each election, so there's no issue with that. And then the voter just goes on their way. And it's as simple as that. So, the differences in the elections, as I said already, if any voter who's registered by April 10th can vote in the town election. However, for the primary, any voter, and they still have to reside in North Reading, but for a state election, including the state primaries, if a voter has moved out of town within six months before an election date and hasn't had a chance yet to register in their previous location, if they're still on our voting list, they can come back to North Reading and vote in a state election or state primary. So, that is the difference. So the voting lists will not totally agree. The town list will also have people registered in various minor political parties such as Libertarian or Green Rainbow, and they will be permitted to vote in the town election. However, those people will not appear on the primary ballot, because those are political designations. They do not have primary status. So, some minor differences between that. But I think, as I said, for the voting public, it'll be a seamless procedure, just like voting in one election. And the differences will be what we do behind the scenes afterwards. The ballots will be separated at the end of the night. The primary ballots are basically white all around with a pink rectangular box and the front header in this general area. And the Democratic ballots likewise are white all around with a blue header area in this area. The town election ballot is a canary yellow all over, just as this is colored all over. The town election ballot will be canary yellow. These happen to be specimen ballots. So, at the end of the night, when we're separating these from the tabulator-based unit, it'll be a very simple matter to pull out the yellow ballots and separate them from the primary ballots, because obviously, in this particular election, we have a few write-ins to probably look at in the town election ballot. Mr. Masari.
So then, my question was regarding the write-ins or stickers. Is there a place for that on the?
Yes, the sticker, if a person is a write-in candidate, their sticker would go in the spot under any name. There's, for every race that's on a ballot, if it's a race for two positions or one position, there's that many lines underneath for write-in candidates, no matter what. Whether we have any declared write-ins or not, you will always see that on the ballot, because a person may not choose to vote for anyone printed on the ballot, but still has the option to vote for one or two people, depending on the race. So stickers would go in the spot of the particular office. That's the only place they will count for a race. If there, for instance, we know that we have three declared write-in candidates for the school committee race. If any of them had stickers distributed, or they had, wrote in their names in any race other than the school committee race, they would not count for that person. The write-in notation or sticker must be placed in the proper race for it to be counted. Mr. O'Leary.
Just in relation to write-ins as opposed to stickers, obviously stickers would have it all spelled out and everything else.
Yes.
If someone chooses to write in somebody's name, how are the board of registrars going to be instructed, or how will they be interpreting the voter intent?
The voter intent is the primary thing. One of the advantages of these write-in candidates, having informed our office of their intent to be a declared write-in candidate, gives them a clear advantage, that if it can be determined clearly that a voter intended to vote for one of these three people, whether by using the first initial of their first name and spelling out their last name, even if it is spelled miss correctly, with or without an address, it would be the intent of the voter that would be the determining factor. So if it's clear that it was a, the intent of the voter was for a particular candidate that had declared themselves, that vote would come for that person. The name, if it's written in and misspelled, again, it's the intent of the voter. It's not going to be held fast and hard that a voter's name is spelled right. Sometimes it might be a phonetical spelling, and as long as the intent is clear, then it would be attributed to that candidate.
A couple of instances, it might be some phonetical spelling.
Yes, there are. There are, especially. Yeah.
I can't even finish in terms of names.
Yeah. There have been court cases that have upheld that, between the spellings of the name and the omission of an address. So clearly, you know, because we have three persons who have declared themselves as write-ins, it will make our job a lot easier, you know, and certainly give credit for every vote cast for any one of them to them.
So again, people shouldn't be overly concerned with the spelling.
Not with the spelling. I will say more particularly to the placement of the name in the proper location. And again, on a ballot, normally, voter under a scanner system would be coloring in one of the oval circles next to a name to attribute that vote. For instance, if it was, you know, a name printed on the ballot, that circle would need to be filled in. For a write-in candidate, it won't. That will not disqualify, because the act of placing a sticker or the act of writing the name in clearly indicates the intent of the voter to vote for that person, with or without the oval circle being filled in.
That was my next question.
Okay. I knew it. He's been around the block once or twice.
Mr. Prisco.
So within that line, that one line, you have to fit the name and the address?
Yes, you are supposed to, correct. So it should not overflow, you know. It certainly shouldn't block out anything already printed in on the ballot. But if it did, again, and there was no other name in there, it was just one write-in, and whether it was one write-in alone or the printed name on a ballot indicated by filling in the oval that that vote was cast and another write-in placed, I would say it would be fair to give a vote to each one, you know. Each case is different, but, you know, basically, the placement of the name in the proper location, that will be the determining factor.
You're not going to have the results at A15.
No, we're not. We will have results for four of the five races at A15, but no, we won't. But the results will be on the website every, you know, election night, as we always do now, which is great. We post them right to the front homepage, and we'll have them there.
Well, I'm sure you're going to be as prepared as you were for town meetings, so it's going to go very smoothly.
Yes, I have no doubt. We have a meeting with all of the election workers on Wednesday and we'll be going over all the fine tuning, so. And we'll have people there, you know, to answer questions and help the voters along. I'm hoping that this will help educate everyone and enlighten them. And as I said, the notice, this notice was in the transcript. I think it's very simply spelled out that it's really not an inconvenience to the voters because we've had questions about coming in for one election, voting, and then recirculating and coming again. And as I said, it's going to be a seamless process for the voter for the most part, you know.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. Thank you for the explanation tonight. You're going to be helpful to the public.
Okay, thank you for having me.
Anyone here for public comment? Moving on to what was advertised as a 7:30 public hearing, water rates and water capital. Mr. Clark?
Good evening. Good to see you. I'm going to make reference, I believe you have two handouts. One has to do with the water rates recommendation, another has to do with water capital. So, I'm going to be starting with the water rate recommendation that Mr. Connavalli made. It's dated February 28, 2013. Just step fairly quickly through it. As you, I'll basically start on the second page of it. As many of you recall and were board members at the time, we took money from the water department for a number of different issues a few years back, specifically to offset a deficit and to deal with some capital issues we had. The amount we actually took out of the water was $531,000 back then. We were running a deficit back in FY 11. We had a water rate study done, or actually in the end of FY 10, had a water rate study done and adjusted the water rates fairly significantly going into FY 11 to cover the past deficits and to basically create about $100,000 surplus in the water, water department or the water enterprise going forward. FY 12 was the first year that those significant rate increases took effect. If you see this bottom of the second page, the certified routine earnings for FY 12, which is basically the surplus for that year, was $268,187. So, it was a little bit higher than, well, significantly higher than we had suspected it would be. FY 12, the summer, we sold a lot of water, therefore generated a little bit more revenue than we had anticipated. To date, that money's sitting where it was. It hasn't been moved to replenish any of those revenue funds as of this date, but certainly, you know, the money's there available to do that.
Excuse me, why wouldn't we be doing that? Reimbursing ourselves?
That was something the Board of Selectmen wanted to do.
Why are we not?
Oh, why are we not? I believe it's just an action that I believe the board needs to take.
We are. It's on the warrant.
The third page of it gives you a breakdown of the water department debt service, which is basically the money, principal and interest we're paying back on money we've bonded over the years. We did a lot of work on the water system back in the early to mid-'90s that's starting to get paid off. And as it's presented here, the total debt for FY 13 is $451,000. For FY 14, it drops off by about $92,000. So, we're kind of at a point where we're paying off some of that debt and the debt service is dropping fairly significantly. That plays into, it's going to play into our capital plan as we start to look and take on new projects. We now have some room in our debt to do that without affecting the rates too much. But it also plays into the rate recommendation we're making tonight as we're seeing a $92,000 drop in debt service from this year to next year. Next page of the packet has to do with the indirect costs. Water is an enterprise. We rely on a lot of different departments in town to assist us in what we do, specifically collections, accounting, that type of thing. Pensions and benefits don't come directly out of the water department. So, this just shows a breakout of the water department indirect costs. FY 13 amounts $378,000. We're looking, making a recommendation in our budget request to increase the indirect costs to account for inflation to about $396,000 for FY 14. So, this is about an $18,000 increase in the indirect costs from FY 13 to FY 14. The last page is the current rates that were set in FY, going into FY 12, which are the current rates right now. And that basically brings us down to the recommendation. Right now, we're looking at the water rates generating about $85,000, and I think I might have skipped that page. There's a page in your package. Where we are with collections right now, anticipating for FY 14 to have about $85,000 in a surplus in the water enterprise again this year. A little bit less than the, certainly less than last year, but a little bit less than the $100,000 that we were hoping to generate. Again, this is projected a little bit out. You know, we still have a couple of months to go in the fiscal year. Depending on the weather in the spring, we could sell more water, we could sell less water. But right now, we're looking at a number of about $85,000. Just to update you on uncollected, I looked at the uncollected percentage today. We're just under 11% right now. If you look at the end of April of last year, we were at about 11.8%. So, we're actually a little bit better on the collection side than we were last year. You can see last year, we ended up with an uncollected percentage of about 10.5%. And that's the number that I said of projecting $85,000 surplus does anticipate that we have a similar uncollected percentage going into the end or coming to the end of this year. So, where that brings us all to the bottom line is Mr. Connavalli, myself, and we actually met with the two members that are left on the Water Commission last week and Joe, I'm sorry, we met with Joe Foti as well. But Vin Ragucci, who's the Chair of the Water Commission, sent us a letter today. And in his letter, he basically says, "We want you to know that we are in agreement with the recommendation of the Water Superintendent and the Director of Public Works that there should be no adjustment to the current water rates and fees for FY 14." So, that's the bottom line. The Director of Public Works, myself, and the Water Commission are coming forward. We're at $85,000 looking at a surplus this year. Our actual requested budget next year is about $30,000 less than the budget for this current fiscal year, primarily because of the drop in the debt service for next year. So, the current rates, as they stand, should again go to generate about $100,000 in additional surplus for next year.
Mr. Masari?
This is a question for Greg. The uncollected water was converted to liens at the end of the year. And do we have any idea what progress is being made on the liens?
I'd have to check on the status of that, Bob. Get your report on what liens are in the water department, be able to do that.
Anyone else?
Yeah.
I have a couple. Mr. Prisco?
On your five-year projected summary that you've given us, one of the things you have in there for 2016 is a $3 million investment in the Central Street Wells. And we've been putting a lot of time into potential, a new water source, maybe potentially through MWRA. Would you still continue to go forward with this investment if we were going to look at another water source?
I just want to, just, right now, he's talking about rates.
Oh, sorry.
We haven't got into capital yet.
Oh, sorry. I thought he was all done. I thought you weren't going to go through this.
Anything else in terms of rates?
Yes, I, well, just a couple of things. Last time we talked about rates, we talked about the Munis module. Did we end up buying that for the water? That was one of the things Liz had made a recommendation last year.
The answer is yes.
Frank, they don't know.
The answer is, you're talking about the billing modules?
Yeah.
To get up, yeah, that's been purchased.
Okay.
They're still in the implementation stage. Because right now, the water bills go out on a different program.
Right. We have a company called Point Software that'll do the water bills right now. I think the, my understanding is it has been purchased. The implementation with water is probably another year off in terms of turning water over to Munis.
And I'll hold off on my other comments. Do we get them?
Okay.
Mr. Foti?
Yes, I just want to reiterate what Mark had said on about last Monday night's meeting. Mr. Perkins, who's a member of the Water Commission, was there, and Jim and Ragucci. Unfortunately, we don't have a quorum. It's not that we don't, we don't have enough members for a quorum. But, so, they didn't take an official vote, but they, I think they came to agreement that what the Director of Public Works and what Superintendent of Water was suggesting would be the way to go, and they supported it.
Mr. Prisco?
The good news is we do have a name up tonight for another member of the Water Commission.
That's good. Mark, if you want to. On the rates?
Yep.
Take the motion, motion on the rates.
Mr. Chair, I move to accept the recommendation of the Water Commission and Water Department to maintain the current water rates for fiscal year 2014 as follows. Tier one, $7.30 per 1,000 gallons up to 10,000 gallons per quarter. Tier two, $10.70 per 1,000 gallons from 10,000 gallons to 22,500 gallons per quarter. Tier three, $14.60 per 1,000 gallons above 22,500 gallons per quarter. And further, to maintain current fees and charges for the period of July 1, 2013 to June 30, 2014.
Motion? And I have a second. Any further discussion?
Do we have to put the administrative fee on there, too, in our motion, or is that just?
It says current fees.
Current fees?
It says current fees. Anything else?
Is it still $5?
Yes.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Hearing nothing further? All in favor?
Aye.
She ends. Capital?
Yeah, the other item was capital, and you should have received a second inclusion in your packet. It would show what Mr. Prisco made reference to, which is our five-year capital plan going forward as the front page. Typically, we have a lot of projects front-ended on it in the first couple of years of that capital plan. A lot of times what happens is not all our capital gets approved or not all of it gets, you know, even brought forward to town meeting. So, we tend to move projects from prior fiscal years into the current fiscal year. So, you see there quite a few projects in the current fiscal year, especially the first two fiscal years. One of the things, the second page is, we were asked to kind of pare things down, come up with a prioritized capital project list for this year. And this, the one that you have is actually the entire DPW, but the water is a subset of that, is at the bottom of that. And you can see there's four projects. We actually have, Dick is here and Paul Brinkman from Wright Pierce as well to, if you have any questions. Paul's here specifically because a couple of these items, he's been working pretty heavily on. First, the draft environmental impact report, DEIR Water. And that's basically, we're looking at, we made an application with the state. We're looking at the option of going to MWRA or another source for our water. And this is the next step in that. We've received public comment back and we have to basically report, prepare an environmental impact report. And, you know, these things tend to get additional layers added to them every time one gets done. So, the state's asking for additional information. Anyone who has a concern about what impact this might have, what impact would us not using our wells in the Ipswich River Basin and then taking water from the MWRA have? We'd have to look at, you know, what are their concerns? You know, greenhouse gas generation is now an issue relative to water. So, it's kind of an all-encompassing project. It's kind of a high-ticket item, but, you know, I'll just leave it at that. If you have, you know, detailed questions, Mr. Brinkman is here tonight. The second project is water distribution system upgrades. You know, we don't like to think about it, but the stuff that's buried under the ground only lasts so long, you know. Rust, you know, what did Neil Young say? Rust never sleeps, you know. It's still going on under the ground even though we don't see it. Our hydrants, our valves, our water services are, you know, they're slowly deteriorating. What we try to do is kind of pair up our improvements on the distribution system with the Town Road Program so that we're not redoing a street and coming in two years later and then digging it up to do water services or put new valves or replace fire hydrants. So, there is kind of a list in here of the proposed work we're looking to do for that $100,000. We certainly have more than $100,000 worth of work that we could do in the water distribution system, but, you know, we're limited manpower-wise on what we can do in any given year. And again, like I said, we're trying to keep a little bit ahead of the Town Road Program. So, if they come in, you might have noticed Central Street a couple of years ago, there was a lot of water work and a lot of drainage work done there in preparation for some future paving. We're looking at Marblehead Street, Tower Hill Road, some other sections of town that are really in need of paving work and taking care of some of the older hydrants and services in those areas. The third item here is water audit demand management. That has to do with, there's a factor called unaccounted for water in every water system. As we draw water from our wells and we buy water from Andover, the total that we're actually pushing into our water system is greater than the volume that's going through or that we're recording going through all the residential meters. It could be going to leaks, it could be going to firefighting, it could be going to hydrant flushing. It could be going to slow residential meters or slow commercial meters. It could be going to just over-registering source meters. So, there's a number of factors that go into unaccounted for water. State generally looks at having a maximum of about 10% unaccounted for water. When we subtract out all our, kind of quantifiable unknowns, we're at about 12 or 13%. So, we're above that 10% the state's looking for us to be. We do do fairly intensive leak detection. We leak detect our entire system every two years to try to find anything that's going into the ground that may not be surfacing. But this would take a look at where are we? Where is that water that we're not accounting for going? And then the fourth project on here is, has to do with taking water from the MWRA. As many of you know, we're looking at that as an option. We had some issues with Andover a couple of years ago. Our own sources are, as Mr. Prisco pointed out, you know, we're looking at a $3 million investment in our Central Street Wells in a couple of years. So, our own sources are in need of some major work if we're going to continue to draw from them. So, this, the DEIR and the MWRA interconnection are kind of tandem projects. We're looking at what are the alternatives to continue to draw from our own sources? And we're, the way it looks right now, obviously, the big alternative to buying from Andover is to supplement that or replace some of that with the purchase of water from the MWRA. So, that's kind of where those, the four capital projects are. And be happy to take any questions.
Mr. Prisco?
No, I was going back to my original question. So, if we decide to make the investment as a town to look at an alternate water source, we may not have to make that $3 million investment?
That's correct. There's another one in the year following that. If you look down, it says Safe Drinking Water Act Compliance Modifications. That would basically to be an upgrade our existing water treatment plants for changes in the Safe Drinking Water Act. If we're no longer using some of our sources, some of those projects do go away. Most of the distribution projects, we're never going to get rid of. You know, we're always going to have to invest money back into our distribution system.
Sure.
You know, some of the source projects would go away.
And then you had mentioned that, the greenhouse gas, and I know that's a brand-new requirement. Actually, I learned about it last week. Maybe this isn't the right time to talk about it, but is it a potential expense on the town that we've never had been dealt with before?
Well, I would say it's definitely going to add cost to that DEIR study. I mean, it's, anytime they add an additional layer to these studies, it, you know, it does increase the cost to the town. What it means, I mean, I defer to Paul. I don't, I...
Yeah, I'm just curious, I mean, is this another one of those black holes that we could find ourselves in? And even the residents of the...
I honestly can't give you a quantifiable, this is exactly what it is. It's a very new requirement. I've not had to go through the process myself. But reading the language, it has considerable content within their regulatory framework and their guidance, their requirements. The analysis should be fairly simple in your case because we're just looking at, you know, what is the electricity? What is the cost of, to the environment of, you know, withdrawing water from the ground and from Andover versus what's the alternative source? What are those electric requirements, which are fairly well-documented? It's not like we're looking at some more theoretical analysis which might be related to a wastewater system. It's a lot harder to quantify those things. So, I believe we'll be able to find it, but it is, it's just kind of another layer that's been added to this whole process that makes it a little harder every single time that you go through it. That's really what the challenge is.
Now, we got a financial planning team meeting this morning, and it was one of these items, I believe it's this one here, that the cost of this item has increased from $200, $265,000. Am I correct?
There were two EIRs. There were, being looked at at the same time. This, the one that we're talking about right now is the water one, I believe, the wastewater one. And then, at the time, we were looking at placeholders, given, you know, your capital planning. So, we developed the numbers, the $200,000 estimates, not knowing exactly what the requirements were going to be put upon the town to say. You have to do this amount of analysis under the EIR. So, when we put that together and we developed how much time it was going to take, what are the individual items that came together? The water one went from our budgetary estimate of 200 to 206, and the wastewater one went from 200 to 2, I believe it's 66?
Yeah. Okay, it's just not reflected in the...
Because it's a wastewater one, it's not a...
No, no, but even your water one, what was provided to us by the Water Department was their capital item list. The water is here, is 200. The, I believe, the question I was referring to goes back to the wastewater.
Okay.
me. That's still showing...
The wastewater is coming from available funds, right?
No, I understand, but I'm just saying that the dollar figure here for both is not...
Should we talk about the whole?
The current information, that's all.
Right. This was put together based on the $200,000 estimate, it's gone up to 206.
Six.
That's something we estimated about, we went through a detailed process about a month ago where we looked at each individual task that they required and then put, you know, actual labor, you know, this is how many hours it's going to take, and this is what it will cost.
Sure enough. I appreciate that. Mr. Leary?
Just if this discussion with the MWRA proceeds quickly and looks like something we're interested in pursuing, what are we looking for in relation to capital? I would think that it would be significant.
That's something that's part of the analysis that's going now through the Water Master Plan and would be through the EIR, looking at the cost differentials between, you know, your standown, your program right now, the way that you're getting it from the wells and from Andover versus the MWRA. And we're looking at putting hard numbers in there, as firm as we can get, you know, knowing it's going to cost X to provide that connection, another cost to pump the water, what improvements might be required in your system to get it from the south to the north as opposed to right now largely it's coming from north to south. So, those, putting those factors together and analyzing and saying, this is the best cost option over the long term for the town.
Yeah, I'm just looking in relation to the anticipated expenditure that Mr. Prisco referenced, the $3 million.
The timing is in the similar timeframe. We're looking at implementation in the next three to four years, kind of timeframe.
So, if we're talking about $3 million capital improvement to Central Street, and then maybe forego that...
Yes. No, that is very much the plan, is to not, to put improvements into the system that would not benefit the long-term selection that's chosen, whichever option is chosen.
But we don't have any best idea as to what range we're looking in in relation to tying in...
We're still develop, doing that cost analysis, that every piece of data that comes in, one of the key pieces is understanding what improvements are required in your system to make that connection work.
Significantly more, I would think, to...
And without having that information in place, it's really, I don't want to hazard a guess at this point.
But it's significantly more than maintaining and upgrading our current.
Correct, but you're replacing two sources at that point. You're replacing, you know, Andover source and your well source.
So, we can anticipate an answer to these questions?
The Water Master Plan is scheduled to end in the late summer, early fall, so we should be able to talk at your Fall Town Meeting about, you know, what that future looks like and update you guys, you know, on that.
Mr. Leary?
Yeah, Steve, getting water from MWRA, either completely or in sharing with Andover, eliminating, taking water out of the ground eliminates the issue of wastewater going forward. So, there's an investment that needs to be made or associated with wastewater as part of this, too.
Thank you for the word, members. Mike, thank you very much, appreciate it. Item eight, it's been advertised as the 8:00 p.m. considers sale of town-owned land. Mr. Foti?
Mr. Shawn, what page is that on? Is that a supplement?
No, it was in the original. I think it follows, follows water, I believe, Mike.
Is it for water?
I don't think so.
I have licenses, so...
You know what, it may be in the first, it's in that first supplement.
It's in the first.
I understand, fine, it's fair.
Thank you.
It's in the first supplement?
First supplement.
Is it the first supplement?
I believe it is. No, I only have the, no, I don't have that.
All right, I got it. Town Road Writing, Board of Selectmen Public Notice. The Board of Selectmen shall be considering for sale the following parcels of town-owned land on Monday, April 22, 2013, at 8:00 p.m. in room 14 of the Town Hall, 235 North Street, North Writing, Mass. Any parties interested in the potential sale and subsequent private ownership of these parcels should planning intending. First parcel is 4331, 17,000 square feet at 44 Oakdale Road. Second parcel is 43-32, 3,000 square feet, 46 Oakdale Road. 235. That's all. Open a public meeting? Mr. Valakonis? You have it to...
Hi, you're...
Mr. Prisco?
No, it's all by itself.
Mr. Ferris?
Board members, for your information, there was two requests received to acquire this property. And that's typically what we do, is we solicit notice amongst all of the boards and committees as to whether they wish to have interest in the land in question. And we've gone ahead and circulated it on 44 Oakdale Road and 46 Oakdale Road. And you can see that we've included a number of comments that are in your packet that have been submitted by the Community Planning Commission, the Conservation Commission, the Board of Assessors, relative to the properties. And at this point, prior to selling the land, you have to go through and ascertain whether there's any public interest for going ahead and selling it. If you do, what we will do is recommend that the item be put up for auction. I believe the proponent is in the audience who spoke, Mr. Ferris. If you'd recognize him, you can state what his interest is in the property.
Mr. Ferris, you want to go on up?
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Shawn Ferris. I'm the owner of 51 Oakdale Road, and I was a former owner of 49 Oakdale Road. My family's owned the property for 44 years. They have not developed it or done anything until last year. We developed one lot and put it off of School Hill Lane. And we also, at our own expense, built the road, granted the town a highway improvement, built the town specs. We actually put in the water line, and it was very costly to do. The reason I'm asking, requesting for this piece of land across the street currently, my septic system is 50 feet away from a wetland. With the town, the state is 50 feet, so it's okay to put it in on state level, but the town overrides it on conservation where it must be 75 feet. Opposed to me going to the state level for a permit for my septic system, I request to purchase a piece of land across the street and install my septic system there. And it's not uncommon that, you know, things like that have been done in the areas. Any questions?
Board members?
I just have a question on the packet. What is lot number 48 highlighted for?
That is Mr. Ferris's property.
I thought you said 49. So, you own 48 and 49?
Yeah, the legal description, I think, is 48 and 49. I think I own 49 now, I sold off 48.
Okay, so you don't own 48 anymore?
Right. 48 would be, I think, 49 Oakdale Road, and 49 would be 51 Oakdale Road. What I did is, I've actually owned four parcels of land. I merged them to conform to the, for the setback requirements and all that. So, opposed to actually, there were actually four grandfathered lots. I actually merged them all together and subdivided them back just to two, so they're, you know, well-conforming to town setbacks.
I guess what we're trying to do is figure out what two lots you're talking about then, is it...
32.
No, no, that's, who's interested in mine? There's a lot 48 and 49.
He owns 49, and he needs to... He's looking for 31 and 32 to put the septic in.
I had, I owned 48, 49, 51, and 52, and I merged them all together and subdivided them, and I cut off the back half, and I put my driveway off of School Hill Lane, and now I own the front half, which is the front half of 48 and a little bit of 49.
So, is it one home on this whole combination?
There's a new house right there, and I sliced it right now.
We're going to ask you to identify where you say, so, the board members know and the public may have some idea what we're talking about.
Okay.
Well, I think we need to have an understanding, and then we can explain it to the public.
Right, but I don't think... The member's down here now.
So, I took, I own 48, 49, 51, and 52. And I took the front part of 48 and 49 and cut that off, which is a half acre. And the rest of it is over an acre and a half, and I had the road come in, I had a driveway come in off of School Hill Lane, which I had my, I had a limited frontage lot on this side of 49. So, now I have 125 feet of frontage over here, or 50 feet frontage, a limited frontage lot, but I also have 100, I think, 60 feet frontage, and it's 20,000 square feet minimum, which I have.
Since we don't have the latest...
So, excuse me, so the lot that you just built on, the home that you just built, it's a portion of parcels 51 and 52, 49 and 48?
Yes, the whole back half.
The whole back half, which is adjacent on Juniper Road.
And the frontage is, what, Juniper? What is the address?
The frontage is 49, the legal description is 49 Oakdale, it's a limited frontage lot, 50 feet and goes straight back, but the access comes off of School Hill.
I know where the access is. Who owns lot number 50?
Not me, I don't know.
So, you're limited, the one you just built?
Yeah.
The access is off of School Hill?
That's right.
Through here.
But where is the, where's the legal frontage that you just built on it?
49 Oakdale, where you see number, lot 49?
Yes.
It goes from where you see lot 50, from that property line?
So, would you pork chop it?
Yeah, it's just 50...
How wide? 50 feet wide? Straight down?
Yep, requirements of the town, 50 feet wide.
Halfway down that 49 lot, and then you went back, 48, cut that in half?
So, they have over an acre and a half.
Right, and then it took 51 and 52.
And he did this, and he did that.
No, no, yeah.
No, that's a asking.
Yeah, the access did on here, but his frontage is actually...
It would be helpful.
Mr. Valakonis?
Yes, sir?
Do we have the latest map? I think it'd be easier.
We do not. Mr. Ferris, could you state the timeframe that you did that within? Our map has not been updated.
Jan, I think it was as this past January, it's recorded through Registry of Deeds and gone through community land.
Shawn, you see lots 50, 51, 52? Shawn, too. He created 50-foot frontage right next to, northerly of lot 50, going straight down towards 49.
Let me show you.
So, he created a limited access, 50-foot frontage off of Oakdale Road, so he pork chopped it.
Did it like that? So...
That's one lot, and that's one...
That's one lot, that's one lot. They're both owing for 20,000 square feet in the area. This is, from this area, you need a one acre minimum, so what I did is I made this an acre and a half. I still kept my 20,000 square feet with 160 frontage, you need 125 feet frontage. Limited frontage lots requires 50 feet straight all the way back to the open area of the house.
And access to this is here?
Right.
And this will still be here?
Right. Because legally, they were never under the same, they were all separate ownerships and separate trusts. One, two, three, four lots. So, they're legally four separate lots, but people could have bought and tried to put a house on it, but I didn't. I just merged them all and made them comply, conform to today's zoning.
But it wasn't grandfathered?
It was grandfathered.
If it wasn't in common ownership?
It was never under common ownership. They were all in realty trusts, separate trusts, separate deeds.
Then how could it be grandfathered if they were, this one you're currently built on?
I was trustee of all the separate trusts.
That's his current...
Just make it, the whole thing, yeah?
Yeah, the whole, right.
So, Mr. Chair, so you're looking to buy parcel 31, 32 to do the septic over for this lot here?
Right.
Which means you're going to have to cross over, get an easement to cross over?
Well, I own the land, and what I did is I just granted an easement for the town, for the public.
Oh, okay.
The cross through.
Okay.
It's an unaccepted street, so the owners own half of it, the middle of the road. The town owns half of it, the middle of the street, he owns half of it.
So, if I get the other lot, I do the same thing. I create a highway easement on that other side. And what I would do here, because I paved up to here, so when you go for permit and stuff like that, they like you to continue any frontage. So, whatever my frontage here, I would continue the road down here, pave it...
To the end of that.
To the end of that. Because, you know, and that's, I know it cost me $60,000 just to do this, you know? And I, you know, no one wants to buy a house on a dirt road unless, you know, but it's a...
Actually, yeah, there's a few people that did.
You'll be able to speak up?
We don't.
Okay.
Is there any other questions?
Okay, how about this? I think...
Mr. Leary?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. So, you would not be able to build without these lots?
No, I can still build. Because the town, the state has a setback of 50 feet for a septic system. I can go to the state and have it override. It's an expense on my end and an expense on the town's end. I don't want to do that. Or, I can do an affordable unit there, which I don't want to drag it out. I'd rather put it something nice. You look what I did on School Hill Lane, it's a beautiful home, setback, set nice, it looks nice. So...
When you say you could do something affordable, what do you mean?
You potentially, I mean, there are, I can still build on it. The state setbacks is 50 feet for a septic system. I can spend, it can cost me $20,000 an attorney and go to the state to get it over.
But you also have a significant issue in relation to wetlands there.
As long as I'm...
Right next door to your property.
Not a problem, as long as it's not in a flood zone, of the flood plain, as long as I'm setback so many feet away, and that's a wetlands issue that they would come up with. And the wetlands, as long as I'm set...
That's pretty wet. Particularly, I was there yesterday.
Okay. What, but from what my engineer, wetland specialist paid for it to do, and flagged it, all the flags are out there, as long as I meet the setbacks, as long as you meet the soil for where it is, that's fine.
So, you think you could meet all those requirements?
Yep.
And get a house and modify a septic system?
Yep. But I prefer to be across, put the septic further away, it'd be appeasing more for the conservation. So...
Pass that down, I don't think the gentleman would...
Yeah, I'd like to see it.
And the property already perked for a septic system. It's just the setback away from, from where the, you know, I got perked for a septic system on the land.
How many bedrooms?
It was a two-bedroom septic system.
Yeah, what would this provide you?
This would probably provide me, you're a three-bedroom fool.
At least.
It depends, you know? If it does afford, does it mean you want to put in a four where the market is now? Would you want to build for a house? Do you want to build an enormous house? They're not going to sell, you know, bigger houses, but I can think...
The home you built is beautiful, by the way.
Right.
It's a pretty good size. How many bedrooms was that one?
That was a four-bedroom.
Right. Didn't take long to sell?
It was, I had it sold before I even built it. So, that wasn't a problem.
Right.
But I think the neighborhood was a little, maybe I was just lucky with the buyer. Someone just came in at the right time. So, you never know. I mean, I'm a real estate broker and...
Market's not right.
Yeah, there's, you know, there's certain things going. New, people want new constructions, people don't want other people's headaches, so. But, uh, is there any other questions I can answer for you guys?
Mr. Priscilla?
Mr. Valletonis, have you had any discussions with our code enforcement on this particular lot? And his recommendations, uh?
From the building inspector?
Yeah.
He just notes the fact that the lots are considered to be affordable, and he's included a copy of his report in the packet. I can read it if you'd like.
No, it's okay, I'll go back and look at it.
He just mentions that the lots are considered in the affordable housing overlay district. The parcels in question would meet zoning for a buildable lot with a combined total area of twenty thousand eight hundred and forty-five square feet. That's his report.
And so, this new lot, now that you penned in here, you would.
He's already done this, it's just, there's no map available.
Right, so, but this new lot that.
Right.
He's purchasing this, he wants to purchase this piece of.
For septic, this lot here.
Right.
How do you, do you access this new lot off of Oakdale?
It's off of Oakdale. And on that land, I don't want to build a house on it, I just want to put a septic system on it.
Right.
That's it, no building.
This is the one he just built?
Yeah.
House is situated right here. Comes off of School Hill. This frontage he created here fifty foot off of Oakdale Road.
Got it.
That's what he owns, this is what he's looking to buy.
And this is not, this is.
Have you approached the owner of, uh? Fifty, a lot fifty?
Regards to?
Purchasing, I mean, it's on the same side of the street.
There's a house on it.
On that one?
I don't think so.
What lot?
The one that's labeled fifty.
Fifty, oh, fifty right there. There's no showing, no, there's no house on that lot.
Right next to your frontage?
Yeah, there's a house on it.
Yeah, our map is obviously, uh, not.
Little outdated map, but there's a house on it. Yeah.
Okay. Okay, I'm sorry, okay. We're gonna hear from. Some, some here, just if I did. The frontage that he created is between your house and the next house, and that's the lot, just labeled fifty here, okay?
Okay, so there is a, uh.
It was created on the north side.
Would you mind coming up, sir?
This is Peter Day.
Thank you.
Peter Day, forty-five Oakdale Road.
Peter, if you could just take a look at this little map here. That's your house. This is, uh, this is the frontage he created. That's your house.
Correct.
There's no house showing here, but that house.
That's Karen Fritsch's house.
That's Karen Fritsch's house, okay. All right, so there is, that's Karen, that's okay.
All right.
So there's a house on it. Thank you.
Anyone from the public? Like to get up, speak for this particular issue? Ma'am?
I'm Peter.
Go ahead. Thought you just, you just wanted your Mr. Larry, and that was it?
It was.
I would have been okay with that. I just wanted to respond to this proposal. I, I represent a bunch of people who live in our neighborhood, several of them couldn't be here tonight. But this rural folks here live in the area. We've seen over the past couple of years, the developments of these two parcels and sort of the evolution of it. It was originally turned from forty-nine and fifty-one Oakdale Road as two standard cookie cutter, hundred and twenty-five foot acceptable frontage lots. It was put in front of the Conservation Commission to build, and they said, you have wetlands down there, as Selectman Larry noted. And they wouldn't allow a septic system to be built there. So, uh, the developer recut the property lines and created, under the limited frontage rule, a fifty foot span of Oakdale for this piece of property and house that is now being built. And cut the property lines again to make it such that he had acceptable, uh, size of a lot, twenty thousand square feet in RRB District. And the same intent, we were wondering if, on a bigger lot, if the town wasn't letting them build a septic system, what's he doing with a smaller lot? And come to find out, now he's trying to build a septic system across the street from a higher elevation into a swampland, and he's going to find drainage there. We're just learning that tonight. And, uh, we, and when I say we, myself and a few of my neighbors, we, we don't think this is a good idea. And we mean no disrespect to the developer, but the idea that this is in somebody's family for a number of years and things being made out of his expense and pocket. He made a handsome profit off of this house development, and it wasn't out of the kindness of his heart, if you will. This is a real estate deal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
First. Ma'am?
Jane Creager, twenty-two Cherry Street, and we owned, I owned fifteen Maple Road with my father and thirteen Maple Road. I think these lots are behind it, and I do have the latest maps and the old maps because I went to the registry. And I think, um, the challenge on Maple and Oakdale has always been water and the road width, a safe road. I think MGL is, I'm not a real estate lawyer, but I have, because of so many challenges there, twenty feet, and it's in a school zone, so it's a sidewalk. And at least thirteen years, Stephen probably knows more. We've asked the town to purchase those things with my neighbor Christine. She owned thirteen, and I do have some maps, but I don't want to take up too much time. And fifteen, and that, we would have, my lot was one point nine acres, it was really in my family. But my father wanted to stay there. And then she had one point four six acres. So, with an A and R, our family attorney was Mark Favoloro, he told us about the A and R. And we asked the town to buy, I think it's thirty-one and thirty-two, if you'll look, it's a buts thirteen and fifteen. And we would have brought in the road twenty feet with a sidewalk, but the challenge was, it wasn't a clear title. So Christine, um, ran the title and did, is that title clear now?
What is your question, ma'am, I'm sorry, I was, I was conversing with Selectman O'Leary about where you live. Please help me.
Christine's, which, which title are you talking about?
I have a map, would you like to see it? I thought, I thought they would have the map.
I think you're talking about clear title on lot thirty.
Thirty-one and thirty-two, or both, you should have a copy of it, she sent the town a copy.
Those are the town lands?
Yeah, we, we have, we have titles, the town has titles.
Oh, okay. Because she had done a title search because the town had said, that's why we couldn't, they wouldn't put up for auction. Um, I could get that information for her, she had a letter at, in the file, do you have that?
I do.
Okay. Does it, you have that information? I mean, I could get it for her, but I thought you would have it, and I have the maps, but I thought you would have those.
I have a letter from nineteen ninety-four from Christine. Uh, to the board, and, um, there is no evidence of clear title attached to this document. The land was acquired by the town in nineteen sixty-three for tax possession. I have a copy of the deed where the town acquired the land, but I don't have anything that guarantees clear title on the property, ma'am.
It doesn't show.
Doesn't, doesn't show it.
It didn't at that time, that's why we couldn't buy it, because if you look at the map, and Stephen, you know, through all the years of trying to get safe and adequate access, right? Through all the houses that have been trying to build. If you look, Mark Favoloro, and we spoke with, there were a lot of hearings and all that. And, um, that would have given, we had one point nine acre, we just sold it a few years ago, both of us. So, and I do have a map, but I don't want to take up the time. That would have given one house a hundred and seventy-five feet on my lot with still an acre on the other, because actually the front lots on Maple are very wet. And just to sell it, we, I know, we spent well over twenty-five thousand dollars because it didn't have water, the neighbors, so we had to be, I mean, I could get the planets recorded on our deed. So it was very expensive for us, but it's the, um, quality issue of having a safe road and water. And if you look at the zoning this, Eisenhower Pond Park, that was taken out in oh-five, and then there were several other zoning regulations, which we didn't really know about. I mean, because they're very technical, and it was just recently, I went to MCL E, and they went over, it was on for agriculture, they, and apparently there are other amendments. So you can practically, they call it a free zoning pass, if it's under the zoning in our area now. So it's just always been very important to us.
So, you're not in favor of us selling?
Well, we don't understand why, we couldn't buy it for all those years, and if the title wasn't clear, there probably isn't a clear title. But again, I thought this would have all been done. So really, over for thirteen years at least, we've been trying to buy it for obvious reasons. We would have two buildable lots, the road, it would, it's in a school zone, it'd be a sidewalk. If you notice the road, and I do have them all, again, I thought they'd be here, School Hill Lane, so it's always been talked about, particularly with the park. They also said that they didn't know whether they wanted to sell it even if they got clear title, because that goes right into Eisenhower Pond Park, and that was the planned development.
Thirty-one and thirty-two?
I think, do you want me to get my map?
Thirty-one and thirty-two doesn't go.
No, it goes straight down Oakdale, I think, is that what you mean? That's where it always was, yeah. There was a development at the end, but people, we tried to build, not us, but you know that, Stephen.
These are their lots, they were gonna do that.
Her lots?
Yeah.
That she sold.
Her and our neighbor.
She and Christine.
So they're gonna do that?
But it goes straight down.
Make their frontage in Oakdale, make their soluses lots.
So she, it would have been.
I thought, I misunderstood, I thought what you were saying was, if we sell these to Mr. Ferris, he gets right down to Eisenhower Pond.
No, the road goes down, yeah.
It's the other one.
You have to look at the tone, I thought the maps would be here, obviously.
Well, we have a map, which is not updated in terms of how we subdivide the lots.
No, that just happened.
Right.
But I think I have the latest ones at the registry. So I guess our question is, why haven't we been able to buy them? And now he can and put it across the street where we had a hundred and seventy-five feet, she had a hundred, there would be a road with a sidewalk, because don't forget, that is a school zone, right? So.
When did you last look to purchase?
Well, we sold it, um, probably in oh-nine, my father was old, and, you know, it's always been a challenge with the water and all that on Maple. So the last time was probably in oh-nine, I could look when the house was sold. And she sold it probably a couple of years ago as well. So we both spent a lot of money on the septic, I mean, I guess we were saying, but we've always wanted safe drinking water and a road. And at that time, we were paying for it, don't forget. And then on Maple, when they developed that, the builder, the CPC asked, the other neighbor didn't want to get, it's all about easements, didn't want to give an easement. So on fifteen Maple Road, which was my father's house, but then I owned it, he was old, um, we were giving an easement. And we would also share in the cost of bringing the road down for Seroni at the end, twenty-nine, and that would have taken it right through twenty feet with a sidewalk. And it was a win-win for everybody, but. I don't know what happened. It never happened, but everybody wants a road and water. Water's very important, particularly if you look at the zoning, I think it's only fair that you look at the whole plan. That's what we would ask you to do. But my question, and.
Well, I really want.
If it's, the title hasn't been cleared, it probably isn't a clear title. She did a title search, and again, I was in the way of them, so Mark Favoloro was gonna do the A and R.
I want to be clear, we don't, we don't do title research on these properties. We're not guaranteeing clear title on these properties, and nor have we ever done that in any of our land sites.
That was just, that's why we can buy it.
I've got all the files with letters. I've got letters that go back into the nineteen nineties, Mrs. Greger, and I can't find anything with regard to your request to purchase the property. I know you've, you've indicated that, but.
No, her and I were splitting it, and Mark would meet with Seroni, Mr. Senior, and so that's.
Yeah, I, I think there was a lot of discussion amongst the property owners up in the area as to whether or not it was feasible. Had discussions with people at Town Hall, and.
But nothing formally was submitted.
Nothing formally was submitted, because clear title wasn't able to be obtained.
No, but she did, because we were splitting it, if you look at those two lots, we would do an A and R.
How it has worked since, at least I've been on the board, which has been a request from any individual to purchase a town-owned lot. It comes before this board on an annual basis. We've been doing it more frequently now, but initially it was at least on an annual basis, now we're doing it more frequently, so.
I think it's changed over the years.
But what I'm saying to you, when I've been here five years, I have not seen a request from, is it Christine, what's her last name?
Cuzak. Cuzak, yeah.
Okay, thank you. I haven't seen a request in Yade or Miss Cuzak's name for either one of these parcels that has come before. Okay, so, so that, that's why I'm saying to you, that's why the town has never entertained selling these lots, because there has never been a formal request submitted on your behalf, on Miss Cuzak's report behalf, to the town to purchase either one of these lots. So you, you started by saying the town never wanted to sell it to you. Well, no, no request was ever submitted. And I guess you wanted it to be a lot, so you're objecting, I don't understand the objection, you're objecting for us to consider selling the lot so this gentleman can build a home? Because you weren't given the opportunity that you never asked for?
Well, actually, Stephen knew it though.
Well, no, I'm asking you, I, I, I don't, I'm trying to follow.
No, we didn't, she sent a formal letter because we were doing the A and R. We met with Mistress Senior through when the, Seroni was trying to build the houses and Faradani, that's how it was done then, I guess it's changed, that's what I'm saying. So I'm not really objecting or not objecting, I think what I would like is to look at a comprehensive plan for water and the road, which we've always done. That doesn't make sense? Thank you.
Mr. Ferris, so actually, is there anyone else from this side first? Someone else, please?
Yeah, come up to me, Mike, sorry.
This is just because people who are watching at home.
Except for say your name.
Everybody wants to see you know who you are, where you're, where you live.
I'm Julie Livingston, I live at seven Juniper Road, right in front of this parceling question. And I just want everyone to know that, we have a large group of people in it, but it's, we're gonna do what we need to do to start protecting the wetlands around our homes and in our neighborhoods. And it hasn't been done well, and maybe we're not the most educated about our rights and the laws, but we're about to become so. So I just hope this is given serious consideration.
Thank you very much. Mr. Ferris?
Just want to make a couple corrections of Mr. Day's comment at first. The, two things, when he requested the town, came to the town to build his home, you know, everyone's like, oh, I'll build my home, but don't build next to me. He came to the town, he applied to the town for his building permit, and this town in North Reading gave him a build permit to build his home. Although on the application, he, he told him, he told the town that it was at forty-nine Oakdale Road, and that was the wrong address, and they issued a permit and they built his house. Secondly, the town has never denied me a permit for my septic system at fifty-one Oakdale Road or forty-nine Oakdale Road. And that's on record, there was, there's nothing on record, town has never said anything. So, just, just to clarify that, because I went in front of the board for the back lot, not the front lot. I already had that perk tested and all that. And they'd never made a decision on that. And if it was ever wetland and it couldn't be done, I'd be more than happy to donate it to conservation, give you the whole thing, not a problem. I would never put something, put a, build a house on a wetlands and create a mold issue for family or hazard or any water things. I'm not like that, would never do that. It was my intention to do the right thing, I've done the right thing, I put the water line down the road at my own expense ahead of time. Because I didn't, I know what I have there, I know what it is. I don't go spending money on something that I don't know what I have. So, and I'm just saying that it would be cost effective for me and the town if I had the opportunity to purchase the land, put my septic system across the street, opposed to putting it fifty feet from the wetland. That's all.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Sir?
Hi, Tim Petronio, uh, seven Juniper.
I'm sorry, can you state your name again?
Tim Petronio?
Thank you.
Uh, seven Juniper. My house abuts that land. I would, I would like to purchase it. I, I, in my sole purpose.
I don't mean to cut you off, but let me exploit the process, if we consider putting these up for sale, then they go up for auction.
Put them in a bid. So it's not as though it'd be a private sale, we decide to sell it to one individual, so. Yep, but my concern, I mean, my wanting that land is strictly so that, so my lot is fairly small, and the only place to build on that lot is at the top of the hill, closest to my house. It's an odd shaped lot, uh, it's extremely wet down at the bottom. And they'd have to build really close to my house. And I really don't want that happening. The other concern with the septic system, his lot right now, on the other side of the road, is, is low, really low. You'd be pumping, and, and it's almost at wetlands level, and then it goes uphill, so he's gonna put a septic and pump the water uphill, it just doesn't sound right. The fact that it's twenty thousand square feet and that's the minimum lot size, is telling me that if he only wanted the seventeen thousand square feet to put a septic and not the three thousand extra, he wouldn't be thinking about putting a house in. But now that you're looking at twenty thousand?
We can put conditions on.
We, we, hey, we can and we have in the past put conditions on where there'd be no, you know, combining the two in order to make it a buildable lot, uh, that there wouldn't be any, you know.
Okay.
Structures on there. So, I mean, we can put those conditions on it, and we'd advertise it as such, if that were our intent.
Okay.
Just, just bear in mind, this is about selling, selling the property, whether this, we decide to sell it or not, not to whom we're gonna sell it. Again, as Mr. Chairman said, if it was, it would be, you know, a process for selling.
In terms of his septic, I mean, that's issues he has to deal with other boards and committees in town, to determine whether or not that works.
I, I, just a question, what lot do you?
I am, I'm, I'm fighting it, I'm right on the corner of.
Year thirty, okay.
Yeah.
At least it's marked on this map, okay.
You're right on that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Come on, don't be shy, come on.
Christina, to Memorial, fifty-six Oakdale Road. I guess I'm just, I don't even, do you live in North Reading? I don't. I don't even know.
Direct, anything you want.
My, my question is.
It just doesn't matter where.
Okay, well, he's so concerned about the road and the people and speaking on our behalf that we don't want the road, a dirt road, we want it paved. I never wanted it paved. It was extremely inconvenient when they paved it and blocked the whole road. I, I just, I don't think, he's expressing, he's trying to be considerate of everybody that, I've, I don't even know this man, not my neighbor. Never wanted the road paved. The water line that he put in, I, I don't know what he's talking about. We, we all have wells down there. I wouldn't have bought in the neighborhood had I known that all these pieces of property would have been developed and my taxes would have been skyrocketing. You know, one on top of another, on top of another. It's not something I would have invested in, so I hope you take that into consideration when you think of selling it.
Just a question.
Yep.
What lot are you?
I'm fifty-six.
Sixty-six?
Fifty-six.
Oh, fifty-six, okay, got it.
And then the one next to it, and I think they, they combined it before I bought it, so.
You're right across from Schimack?
Correct, yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Ferris?
Just to clarify that, I own the road. I granted an easement to the town. I built the road. So that's all. It wasn't like a town, whatever. I granted that for, for everyone doing, so, you know, that's all.
Will you understand that? Mrs. Greer?
I guess that's, it's discouraging that, you know, the policy has been changed. I'm not saying it's good or bad, but.
What, what policy are you speaking of? I, I'm not clear.
Well, what since, let's say since nineteen ninety, when Faradani wanted to build his house. And the road width and the water has been a problem because the road's an hour.
My question is, what, you got up and said, the policy has changed. I'm trying to identify, and I'm trying to stay with you. What policy are you speaking of that has changed?
Selling town-owned land.
Okay.
Stephen could sell what the policies are, I guess.
Right before, I went over it with you. Since I've sat here, I haven't seen a request come before this board on an annual basis or more frequently than that. Either, either in your name or your former neighbor's name requesting to purchase either.
Since when?
I've been here for five years, so.
It was a long time.
She says she sold a year ago.
No, since oh nine, I think. But it was, like, this has gone on for about, at least, what, Stephen, twenty, thirteen years?
The policy of the board hasn't changed. The practice has changed as far as, you know, how often we, we look at it. And also the amount of money that we would be looking for has changed. You know, before, we, we had a policy where it said, you know, assessed valuation, which didn't make any sense because one of these is a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars.
Right.
It's not worth a hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars in anybody's market. Ask the realtor over there. So the policy changed in relation to the board's practice as to how, how often we're gonna offer it, how we're gonna offer it, and then how much we're gonna be looking for in order to get it back on the tax rolls. So that's the only thing that's changed, the practice. As far as requiring road improvements and water and those sorts of things, this board has never been involved with that. It always relied upon Community Planning Commission or the Board of Appeals to require anyone developing to do the improvements. So the board's policy and practice hasn't changed in relation to that. That being said, when Mr. Day was looking to build his house, he was required by the Community Planning Commission, I believe, to improve the road to his. When Mr. Ferris was looking to pump up his lot here, get some access, he was required to bring it down a little bit further. In that way, they have, from a road maintenance standpoint, it's cheaper for the town to maintain it instead of going in there and grading it every year and putting more stone in for the residents, a little smoother, smoother traveling, particularly in the springtime. So the only thing that's changed is that the board is, is looking at these parcels a little more readily, are responding more quickly to requests. And this is a request by Mr. Ferris to offer the land up for sale, which we're doing tonight, considering whether or not we want to offer it up for anybody in town to, to purchase.
So when Christine sent her letter in, why wasn't it offered? As far as we know, it never was, because.
I don't recall, I don't recall Christine's request to purchase.
He has a letter, copied a letter, I think.
Was it from Christine, was it one of them?
It wasn't?
Mr. Bell, call us.
April nineteen ninety-four.
Okay.
Oh.
Twenty years ago.
I wasn't on the board that year.
No.
That was one of my brief hiatuses.
I don't recall a letter in two thousand nine coming in. I want to be clear that we don't recall a letter in two thousand.
We didn't request it every year.
No, but at that particular point in time, whoever's sitting on the board decided not to offer it for sale.
Right.
You know, and that's the board's prerogative. Like, tonight, we're gonna decide whether to offer it for sale or to hold it, continue to hold it.
And then we worked with the CPC. So they had came and asked and said, will you meet with, it was the developers because they wanted to.
And again, that's CPC in their planning mode, trying to improve the area, improve the water, access to water, improve the road conditions, and so on and so forth.
So we were surprised now when you said all of a sudden you got a request and you're gonna sell it.
We're gonna respond to every request that's made. It may not be a favorable response, but we're gonna respond to the request.
And then the person should keep requesting every year?
Until the, until the idea of the board, until either the majority of the board changes, opinion changes one way or the other. But if we decide tonight to offer it for sale, you know, for sale, public auction, people get to make a bid. And then, just as a matter of importance and understanding, the board does not have to take the highest bid.
Right.
The board can sell it to who they deem to be in the best interest of the community as a whole, the neighborhood as a part of the community. And can decide to sell it to the, to a lower bidder if they think it's deemed in the best interest of the community.
Well, I appreciate that because I think it's important that everyone knows what the policy is, because I think even you'll agree it's changed from time to time, right?
Yeah, but that hasn't changed, yeah.
And the other thing is what I thought was that when water comes down a road, that it was supposed to be cold. So that you get a permit and then it, everybody can hook up or whatever.
Right, if it goes by your house, you can hook up.
Yeah, once it's, once it's brought in, it's all about.
Because on our street, I think it wasn't, there's just a pipe that was brought in, and that was when in nineteen ninety, because we had asked about that. So I think it's important that, you know, maybe everybody knows what the policy is, because I know, I didn't know until it came up. And then you have to spend a lot of money to get a lawyer and everything, and then you find out, they say, well, that's not code, but we didn't know that. And I think it's only fair to everybody that they know what the policy is and that, you know what I mean, Stephen? On Maple Road, there is a water main through there, but it's not even a main, I think it's just a pipe.
I don't know, I don't know what's in the road right now, but if it goes by someone's property, they can tie in.
No, because we asked, so maybe the water department could, like.
We can look into that as a separate issue.
Please, that's what I guess I'm asking, because if you look at the master plan, the capital plans, apparently private wells aren't on there. I could be wrong, but I haven't seen it. And of course, I mean, I asked my husband, we pay a thousand dollars in taxes, and I think it's really important that if we're not on it, that, that we know. So hopefully, maybe you could have a meeting about that thing.
Thanks, Jan.
Mr. Ferris? Mr. Ferris, and then Mr. Day and this gentleman here.
Part of a conversation a few minutes ago, just like, you know, I'm not a licensed builder or not like that. Like I say again, this land has been in my family for forty-three years with the intent that my father wanted one of his kids to do something with it. I sold off the back lot to have funds to build my own house on the street. And that was, that's my intentions. And I only need, you know, for a septic would make things feasible. And if you deem to put it in public auction for a septic system use only, that's just as well, so it's no one else is being built around. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Day?
Just a quick point, gentlemen, if I could suggest or remind the board that you may choose to sell this piece of property under certain auspices of only directly abutting, directly touching properties, may purchase it for the purposes of, say, preservation and non-use, excluding folks like myself across the street from a, a public right-of-way. And the intent being, if you're touching it and you would like to purchase it, then you can have that, since it just sort of folded into your own piece of property. You are eliminating the possibility of trees getting raised, and you're also bringing it back into the tax base. The selectmen have done that in the past. They've created sales of public property where only folks who touch it directly are, are allowed to even bid on it.
I think in this particular case, he would be considered a director butter because he owns halfway to the middle of the street and so does the town.
If, if you consider it on the other side of a private right-of-way as, as a butter, that, that's of course a call of the board.
I don't know if we could redefine that.
Right.
A butter, that way, but.
Well, for example, in the sale of a piece of property on, on Juniper Road last year by the town, anyone across the street from Juniper on the paper street wasn't, wasn't invited to bid, just for example.
I don't think so.
I don't think we precluded anybody. Someone wasn't buying a piece of open land.
The exclusion was related to what you could do with it.
What you could do with it. The exclusions, Peter, were just as to what could be done on the property. It wasn't as to who could bid on it.
Craig Gilarmini, I live at thirteen Maple Road, which is plot twenty-eight, which was formerly Miss Cuzak's property. And I just, I guess I'm just looking for clarification on the, on the process, if it goes to auction, how long, when that would happen, how long you have to consider the options. Because I guess I wasn't aware that this was available land. Just ignorance on my part, but, so if you could clarify.
We would, it'd probably be about two months in terms of when it would be available for auction. We coordinated with our tax title attorney. He would actually hold a public auction, so there'd be actually not a sealed bid, but an auction process. And it's sold under any conditions that will be established by the board this evening. The board has a number of conditions that they can establish with the property. But typically, it's about two months from the date that the board established that they want to sell the property, to actually go ahead and we actually have the auction.
And there'll be public notice of the fact.
Certainly, there's always public notice.
And you would make the determination tonight on what can happen to the land, or does that happen later?
Propose the board's purposes to decide whether they wish to sell the property. If so, what the minimum value of the property will be, and any individual conditions that are associated with it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, what else before I close the public hearing?
Mr. Livingston? Mr. Livis, no, I just, where's, where's your septic system?
In our front yard.
In your front, yeah. So if, if your system were to fail, what's your relief? I don't.
Yeah, I don't know. I, I mean, if actually someone builds right there, I don't know.
We're very narrow, we're long-skinned.
Yeah. Right. Anything further before I close the public hearing? Oh, Mrs. Greer?
May I have one more question?
Sure.
So now I'm confused because this seems to be, there were private wells on Maple and Oakdale. So if a water main isn't brought in by the town, or, you know, is it, number one? And if you have septics and some people have private wells, that's a whole other set of criteria. And I'm wondering, she just mentioned that, so who has private wells and who has town water in? Is it a town water main?
I don't think it's a factor in whether this gets put up for sale or not. It's not an issue. I just raised the question only because I know they're a director butter, probably have an interest. The interest is, you know, to preserve the, you know, the rural area and look. But also, there may be an interest later on down the road for them for access to replace a septic system, which is usually good for twenty-five or thirty years.
So you just decided, tonight you just decided whether you're gonna sell it or not sell it?
Correct, and what conditions? What conditions we're gonna put on it, if we're gonna put it up for sale.
Okay, thank you.
Anything further? Close the public hearing. Board members?
Yeah. First of all, you know, if the gentleman can build on his lot as it currently exists, he has every right to do so. If I have a choice between a two-bedroom house and a four-bedroom house sitting here and, and having, and having my vote effectuate that difference by allowing, putting this property up for sale and he purchases it, I'm for a two-bedroom home rather than a four-bedroom home for, in this particular area, for the school system. You know, the more new houses we add, generally, they're a loser. They don't generate enough tax income in order to support one child in the school system. You know, unless there's some giant home that's gonna, you know, pay twelve thousand dollars in taxes a year, it doesn't even support one kid in the school system. Not looking to deny him his right to bird, to build. I, I question whether or not he can put a, a house on a septic system. I mean, I'm very familiar with the area. I was up there yesterday. It's pretty wet, and I know the house that he just built. If you're looking, where he built the house, just down to the left of it, heading back towards Oakdale Road. There's wetlands down below. Conservation area directly abutting it. I guess I'm, I'm not in favor of offering it for sale for the express purpose of allowing someone to build a bigger home. I would be in favor of offering it for sale should a director butter come to us with a hardship and stating that, you know, I need to replace the septic system when the time comes. And from a public health standpoint, that would be an appropriate consideration. I certainly wouldn't be looking to, as the building instructor effector pointed out, if we sell these two parcels and they're combined as one, then we'd probably have legitimate square footage and, and frontage to be considered a buildable lot. So again, I'm not looking to add to the single-family homes, never single-family homes in this particular fashion with town-owned land. So I'm inclined at this particular point in time not to offer it up for sale. But if the majority of the board is looking to do it, I would urge the majority of the board to, again, put some severe restrictions on it as to what the purposes that they can be used for would be, and it wouldn't be for the construction of a single-family home. And it would just be for, again, ancillary use and accessory use, for the purpose of a septic system. And I think if you do that, it certainly would enhance Mr. Ferris's ability to build a better home and may assist these people down the road also. But I don't think it's necessary at this time to offer it for sale.
Mr. Brisket?
So combined, we have twenty thousand square feet we're talking about selling, right?
Correct.
Would it be possible to combine the lots and then split them in half, so you have two ten thousand square foot lots and then sell two ten thousand square foot lots where, and maybe deed one to the butter? So that they have it for future use, and then sell the other ten thousand square foot lot that could potentially be used to build that house?
I think part of the problem would be is if you're looking at lot thirty-two.
Yeah.
The smaller one, it's fairly wet.
Yeah, but is there enough of the seventeen thousand that's left over? Maybe leaving that three thousand alone by giving enough space?
I don't know, the, the topography of the lot, thirty-one, is, is pretty high, and then slopes down towards thirty-one and down towards the road. It's very high at the road area and slopes down as thirty-one runs into thirty-two. It slopes down substantially, and then most of thirty-two is probably wet. So if you're looking to allow people in Juniper here to purchase the half that's closest to them and directly behind their home, it isn't necessarily going to effectuate what Mr. Ferris is looking to do. He may not be able to perk it to get the size system he needs.
Anyone else?
I think that, I'm just. Well, I, I think, first of all, the board has set out to try to take some of this town-owned land that would not result in further development, but would help people that had restrictions to their lots, as Steve has said, to put that land that has no other use basically on the tax roll. So this one's a little more difficult because it, as Steve has said, it basically provides the opportunity if the builder wanted to, if he had the septic system over there, possibly he could build a bigger home. he could build a bigger home. It makes it difficult, from that point of view, for me to decide one way or the other at this point, as to what's the best interest of the town. However, one of the other rebuttals is expressed interest in the land, and that particular butter has a different need, potentially, I guess, it provides him with an opportunity because he's got a limited amount of land evidently for a septic system. Hello? I'm not sure where one of the lot lines is for that lot, based on the fact that the road goes through. Is that the road, the divider of that lot?
No.
You talking about that blue line bar?
No, I'm talking about this road here.
If you could help us, I think we need some help.
This is Lot 30, I think. He's interested, it would also express interest. The road goes through here. I'm trying to find out where the lot line, so my lot is.
It's right here. 30 right here. So the road comes around, so Juniper, Paper Street, it pretty much just, Oakdale comes down and goes around and goes right through my front car.
Wow.
Now I know where you are.
Part of Oakdale is Juniper.
Just this piece right here. Then that's the bridges.
Oh, okay. Can you point to it?
Yeah, I know that.
Right here.
The one you tapped?
This is Juniper Road.
Yeah.
Who's had a test?
His address is Juniper.
I just wanted to make sure I had the right.
No, I was trying to determine the size of his lot. I see a lot line here.
Yes, yeah.
And is the road determined the rest of the lot? That's what I was.
Thank you.
Steve, can you just, do me a favor? So where is the lots that we're talking about here? So that's Jeff's house.
Right here.
It's right there. And something's been developed over here already now.
No, associate, there's nothing here. These go all the way to Maple.
Okay.
Christine Cusack's former home, and Quinlan's old home. Their lot goes right up to here.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay.
This is Quinlan's.
So.
And this is now his house.
Okay.
So the road is about, this is actually Juniper, this driveway, and through here, all the way to school, the Paper Street.
Okay.
I guess I'm on the fence, and I'd like to get some kind of a recommendation from both the CPC and the Conservation Commission.
They, uh...
Have they made a recommendation?
Again, to me, we can, you can continue the public, well, you closed the public hearing, we can continue our deliberations, or we can just vote no, do some more research, and then decide later on. Vote not to offer for sale at this particular time. Do some more research and find out exactly what the impact of our decision would be.
Is Lot 47 conservation land?
Yes.
I was trying to pull up what conservation it sent us. Yeah.
And so is 33, 34, 35 across the street, which is, you know, 32.
Here is Barbary.
32 goes right into it. That's why 32 is wet.
Yeah, yeah. Neither property is located within 100-year flood zone. Yeah, she just says that while the wetlands are located in very close proximity on several abutting parcels, no wetlands areas are shown on either property on the north-facing FEMA flood zone or wetlands.
That's CPC, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd be your favorite table until we get an actual, you know, from Conservation and CPC.
I'm, I am, I am interested in selling the property, I am. But I, what Steve says resonated a lot with me, that we should sell it to the best interest of, I think, probably in a butter, to make sure that we don't have, we don't cause a problem for someone else down the road. So it's probably something we should get a little more educated on. So I'm all in favor of waiting a little bit more to gather more information, but at this point, I'm in favor of selling it, but with conditions. I think it is time for this property to go.
Board member want to weigh in?
I have one last thing, too, if I could.
Mr. Priscilla?
I don't think I would ever be in favor of selling 32, though.
32 is the largest lot?
It's the smallest lot. Because of its proximity to the wetlands, and so, you know, if you guys are going to, you know, if we're going to make the decision that we have to sell both, then I'm probably going to be in favor of not selling. But if we can separate the two and just focus on Lot 31 and do what's right in the best interest of the butters up in that community, then I'm all in favor of it. But I'm definitely not in favor of 32 at all. I don't even want to take the risk.
32, you can decide to go to town, we can give it to Conservation.
Yeah, yeah, I would be more inclined to do that.
But we can do that anyway.
Yep, and then it will kind of, well, and it would make sense, if you look at the green on these maps, it would be a natural fitting for Conservation.
Does it have a road running through here?
Yeah, yeah, that's okay. Road runs through over to these as well. So it'll tie all together.
The road gets pretty wet sometimes.
Yeah, I bet.
So I believe the consensus of the board is to get further input from CPC, Conservation.
Chair, I'm just going to make a motion to chair, to table.
I'm sorry. Directing to Val.
Great, just going to, more input from CPC and Conservation. I'll second the motion to table.
You got a motion to table? You got a second? Any further discussion?
No, sir.
Hearing that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, I think Mr. Fodey made the, Mr. Fodey made the motion, just clarification.
Yeah.
I'm sorry?
Means no action taken.
We haven't taken any action this evening. We're seeking further input from Community Planning Commission, Conservation, concerning these two lots.
And we may or may not take it off the table.
When do you expect, I guess, the next movement or discussion? I would say probably not until the second meeting in May.
Yeah, probably, I think that's a good, probably about a month from now.
You're welcome.
All, yeah, all in favor, unanimous. Moving right along. That's good.
Mr. Perkins, I received your note, you dropped off.
Yeah. I wanted to talk to you about new business here.
New businesses, that's a board item? You want to, you want to commit another public comment?
Public comment.
And, uh...
Wherever that comes.
Yeah, we already want to throw it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
If you want to join us, we'll be back here, same time, same place, next week.
Next week?
Yeah, next Monday.
Because we got a late start. I typically ask the board members to go back, but we got a late start, but you're more than welcome to come back next week.
Okay.
Okay?
Don't forget.
You don't forget us, we're here, you should show up. Item nine, Route 28 Motors amend license. Is there anyone here from Route 28 Motors?
Should we pass them?
Well, it's up to the board whether or not we want to consider it at this point in time.
Sorry, what were the recommendations?
No, this is on.
Item nine, Route 28 Motors amend the license.
Oh.
Mr. Chairman?
No, we're not.
Even if you're going to take an action, we're the other. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to record to show that I'll be recusing myself from any discussion or deliberations of the board in relation to the matter in front of the board in relation to Route 28 Motors, which is a Class II used car license. I have a family member who happens to hold a Class II license, and to avoid any appearance of conflict, I will not be participating in the discussion or any deliberations of the board.
Thank you, Mr. O'Leary. Did you get that? Recusing himself, he has a member that has a Class II license, how's that? I summarize that pretty well?
That was awesome.
All right, very good. The applicant isn't here. I'm prepared to act on the motion. I don't know what the board members...
What'd you say?
I'm personally prepared to act on the motion. I don't know what the board members feel, if you want to postpone it.
No, I don't need any more time. Go ahead and read the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the change of ownership for the Class II license for Nika Inc., DBA, Route 28 Motors Change Inc., 137 Main Street, from Joseph Sardillo to Agia Vakili.
I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a second. Discussion.
Yeah, I think we need to, Mr. Chairman, is, if you look at what building sent us in their applicant, application stuff, and if you look at number three in his response, if you drive by the lot, and I think you, Mr. Chairman, have done that, right? Maybe you could give us...
We see that earlier this morning, the business currently far exceeds the limit in terms of vehicles that they can house there for sale. My quick count was in excess of 20, probably approximately 25 motor vehicles there. I believe their limit is 16 plus two employee vehicles. So we don't even have any applicant here this evening. I'd be in favor of denying this request.
Yeah, I mean, Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. DeCola states here the max on the lot, including cars in the bay, employee vehicles, in total, max of 20. So clearly, this is, continues to be a problem on this, at this particular location. So I probably want to be in favor of approving it, just because we continue to have a violation of the, of the state, stated limitations for this lot.
Mr. Priscilla?
I think the fact that we proposed the owners present tonight, and the fact that there are issues, I would, I can't support this request at this point either, I would deny it. And if the owner wants to come forward and explain to the board in person why they should be transferred, and at this point, without an opportunity to deal with the issue of abuse of the license, then I wouldn't have a problem.
Yeah, he needs to tell us how he's going to address the issues that might happen.
Mr. Val, do you want to weigh in?
The only way in that I would have is maybe the opportunity, you know, we received confirmation the individual would be here this evening, perhaps suggesting that you carry it over for a meeting or two to give him an opportunity to be present to explain why he wasn't here. Your denial of the license will basically cease the operation of the business. And that was my only thought, in terms of the fact that if you wish to keep the business operating, perhaps you just simply delay action, table action at this evening until a couple weeks from now.
Mr.?
We're not denying, they have the license, we approved that back in December.
They're amending the license.
We're just not approving the new manager.
Right.
Yeah. Well, out on the where I sit here, based on the feedback that we've received, you know, this continues to be a problem. So I think we really don't have any other choice but to deny it, to really get the attention that's required to get this corrected. Because what we've done in the past isn't working. So I'm in favor of continuing on with the motion, and I'm going to vote not in favor.
Anything further?
Again, I'm not in favor, but I don't, I don't view this as denying the license.
I do it the same way you do, Mr. Priscilla.
Yeah, well, how you view it, you'd view it as denying the...
Transfer.
The transfer of the manager.
Yeah, right.
It's this change of ownership. It's this change of ownership.
So I guess maybe...
You're affecting the guy's business. I, I... All right. I'm going to, I'll withdraw the motion and give this gentleman opportunity to come before us.
When is a transfer of a civil business, don't we provide usually much more documentation than what we have here? No, but I don't even think it's in the packet.
No, all we have in here is the department reports, and I don't think we have much else than that. That's, I don't have it, at least.
I understand, Mr. Chairman, typically, a licensed application...
Right.
...indicating what his experience is and what his background is to be able to engage in this type of business.
And I think the way it was worded in the packet was a change in manager, not change in owner.
Yeah, that's the way I was going at it, but Mr. Fodey is correct when he read it. It does say, yeah, and I didn't pick up on it, because I really thought this was a change in management, but it's really a change in ownership. And I think, Mr. Dline is clearly right, that we don't have the right adequate, right and adequate information to go with this request. Michael, I withdrew, do you want to? Yeah, I'm, you know, based on that, I'm going to withdraw my second. And we could put it on maybe a future agenda.
The consensus to pass over?
I guess it matters. I'm pushing the same thing.
Yeah.
Because we can continue, I think our agenda's pretty busy next week, if we continue to our first meeting in May.
Sure.
Notify the applicant.
And then we expect the applicant to be present?
And if we could get the additional information required for a change in ownership, some, just some background to know that this person's knowledgeable to run this type of business. But it does say that he's doing it now in Reading, so I'm not sure if we should have somebody reach out to Reading to see if they've had any, any feedback. Is that possible?
We certainly will do that. And put in the packet a license application. Could very well be that we have that filled out, it's just not in the packet this evening.
So if you could reach out to Reading as well, that would be great.
Very good. I'm going to postpone it to our first meeting in May.
All right.
Mr. Cannavale?
Yeah, let's, let's, let's do the appointments.
The articles, there's issue on water.
Oh, okay.
All right.
Anybody here on the municipal agreement?
Yes, I want to speak for her, if I could, Mr. Dline.
Okay, sure.
Mrs. Wright's here because she is interested in some of the CIP requests for funding, and I had actually sent an email to Mr. Cannavale about, oh God, the street escapes my mind, but she's requesting some sidewalks. What is it?
Yes, thank you.
And Mr. Cannavale provided me some information that it is in the CIP plan, that particular area that Mrs. Wright's requesting installation of a sidewalk. So I had asked her if she'd be interested, we're going to be discussing the budget in the CIP tonight, that she may want to come in and give her reviews and advocate, for the board to support the funding to do that. So if you want to hear from her now...
We haven't seen a list of streets yet.
What's that?
Haven't seen a list of streets or sidewalks, have you?
No, I haven't. It was actually one of my questions, so that's why I emailed the DBW Director, because I haven't seen a list of streets. And that's when he replied back to me, said it is on his, but I haven't seen the list, so I assumed we were going to get it. I assume we're getting it tonight, I'm not sure. But the main thing is, Mrs. Wright wants to advocate for the approval of that funding because that particular area's been dangerous. Maybe we give her the opportunity to come up to the mic now, if that's appropriate? I'm not sure.
I'm just trying to get a sense of where we're going, in terms of, Greg, that'd be incorporated in the warrant articles?
CIP recommendations based upon some feedback that we got at the financial planning committee meeting. I was planning on making my recommendations at next week's meeting, because we'll be discussing the budget, and then we have a gap between this 6:00 PM presentation and the 7:00 PM presentation. presentation and the seven P M. budget hearing. My goal was to really go through the warrant and go through the CIP plan with the board, and finalize my recommendations at that time.
Might I suggest to reopen public comment, allow Mrs. Wright to request?
I understand why you're requesting it, but I already sent another gentleman home.
We did?
I did.
Yeah, Mr. Perkins has asked for it, too.
So as a result, I have to be consistent, so.
I am sorry, Mrs. Wright, for making you wait all night like this.
I hope that, um, I mean, I just still have an activated switch.
She could put something writing to you, though.
I have it in writing. If it's okay with you, can I?
Sure.
Share it with the board?
Yes.
If that's appropriate, I'll do that.
I think that'll be best, and then by, I presume we're going to have that list, so we'll see it.
Yeah. I'm as well surprised we haven't seen it yet, but.
Thank you. I'm sorry you sat here. Apologize. But hopefully you can make it next week. If not.
Hopefully you enjoy yourself.
It's good TV.
Mr. Prisco, unless I'm looking in the wrong place. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. If I could have. It said that we have that information, so.
That's right.
No, we do not.
Have, have approved it or recommended, it would be in your capital report.
I'm sorry, I, I didn't see it, so.
We're not going to deal with capitals next week, so.
All right.
Next Monday.
So you are next Monday?
Next Monday.
You can't look fair, are you?
No, 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 not tonight.
We want the street list.
Thank you.
Right, he wants a big chunk of money, but we don't know what streets.
We won't charge electricity.
Why don't we go down to item fifteen, and we can discuss the warrant articles. The rest of the audience is here. We'll deal with that, Greg, we can deal with that on our own.
The warrant would have been in the original packet that went out on Friday, excuse me, on Thursday.
Blue copy? Yes.
If not, I'll send Paul home.
Article sixteen?
Sixteen.
Right, I guess Mr. Cannavale, you prefer to be ready.
Yeah, the purpose of tonight's meeting was to discuss the warrant articles in a general sense.
I didn't know that either. I thought we were discussing them as well.
Well, does it make sense he's here? Wait a second.
He's here.
He's here this evening.
Please, please. It would be helpful, we, we could do it.
Of course. No, but, I mean, he can give his input on terms of this warrant article.
I think it's important.
Because I presume that we're paying this gentleman to sit here this evening, and we're going to have him come back and sit again next week and pay him again for next week?
Not really.
Not really?
No, I, generally, my hours are in state, like, I pay for it, so I.
Really? Sit down and be quiet, we'll get back to you. See you next week.
Don't do that to him. But I just. Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, but I, it's confusing then from these agendas. I thought we were talking about it. I mean, how are we supposed to know, when we see the agendas like this, that we're only supposed to have top-level discussion on our warrant, because when we're, you know, it's April twenty-second, you would assume that we were having some level of detail, so maybe in the future, if we could maybe highlight in parentheses that it's a top-level discussion, so we have an idea, so we don't have people to support the discussions here.
But, Mr. Vali Cannavale, based upon our discussion this morning, you did have some idea of what you were going to propose for us, correct?
I did, yep.
So we could address it to that extent, right? We may have to come back and take another look at it next week, but.
I, my understanding was that, during our discussion this morning, and Greg had numbers for a number of the items.
Right.
Right, that although we were going to vote our recommendations at the next meeting, and I remember saying, there's some here, they will give you a vote tonight, as we, I assume we're going to go through all of them. With respect to capital, I understood that that was going to be done at another meeting, the capital article itself.
Okay.
Okay? But, the capital, with respect to getting information, for the board members of the wastewater committee.
Paul can.
Paul's here.
Presentation.
And has requests for items.
Yep.
That now's a good time to explain what they're for.
All right.
Come on down.
Come on up. Come on, all right. It's part of, it's part of article sixteen. So I guess I, if you can give me a, some framework or whatever, what, what specific concerns, questions, or what information can I provide?
Well, there's a, there's a budget, Dick's budget capital request, there's money for.
The DEIR.
Wastewater DEIR.
The wastewater DEIR.
Right.
Okay. As I mentioned earlier, we were talking about a water DEIR, and that was relative to purchasing MWRA water, bringing that in, and that requires some analysis and study before it, before you can actually make those connections, because of the, I guess, I want to say the amount of permitting and the amount of oversight that's required within this state, but it's, it's a considerable challenge to get a large project undertaken and worked out. So with the water side, collaterally, we saw an, a benefit where we, because of the fact that we were bringing in water from MWRA as a, as a potential, there's a way of providing wastewater service outside of the current format that, that's been presented to the town in the past, which is a treatment plant and trying to get it back into the ground here. Under the permitting regimens, you're allowed to, if you bring in new water, you're actually allowed to transport out without penalty. Doesn't mean that there won't be people that don't like the idea because of whatever facet, but it does provide us a, a much clearer opportunity and less impediments. So in order to do that, we still need to go through this DEIR process, look at all those permits and, and all the impacts, the greenhouse gases, all those other types of thing that goes into, to a DEIR. But by putting them together, you get efficiency, because they're happening at the same time, and you, you allow for a comprehensive look. You won't have people looking at you and saying, well, what are you doing about this, and what are you doing about that? You put them together, and you, you, you have a good plan going forward, a good understanding. Under the wastewater, we did some analysis last year, looking at the plan that you have today, which is, you know, treatment plant and putting it back in the ground, and then compared it to some other alternatives, regional facilities for treatment, and that provides a lot of benefits to the town. It provides, you get bulked together with a larger facility, and you get a better cost, because the cost to treat a small amount of wastewater is relatively high. As you get larger and larger, that unit cost goes down considerably, and one of the ones that we looked at was at Greater Lawrence Sanitary District in North Andover, that regional facility there, and they actually have the capacity, they have a good model for having communities add in, because they recently added in the town of Drake it through Methuen, in the similar fashion, almost the exact same volumes that you're looking at right now. So there's a framework already established to, to allow for this to occur, it's just outside of the permitting that we have to put, put together. Other benefits that having wastewater outside, we'd be improving the water quality in the Ipswich River, moving pollution, that's now, you know, an inadequate septic system that's on, you know, Route twenty-eight, or likewise, that's having to be rebuilt every five years. Now they would have a, a much longer-term solution, would allow those, those properties to be less impacted, they'd be able to have, have a better, higher level of service, or a higher level of, I guess, development.
Revenue.
Revenue. Yeah, revenue. Because you could improve that property to a better fashion, they wouldn't have to be reserving part of their parcel to, to deal with wastewater disposal. You would be able to maximize their use in a better fashion, and create, potentially create a situation like you see at the Concord Street, at, at the Wilmington border, where you have a facility that has sewer there now, and it has a lot, a different look to it than some of the places along Route twenty-eight that have, you know, kind of struggled with wastewater and whatnot in the past. So the DEIR encompasses all the study areas that are required to kind of pass this permitting threshold, to get public input into the project, and to understand what, what, what needs to be done in order to provide that, even on a cost basis, looking at the dollars, you know, where, where, what, what is a plan to put this forward? How do we put this on the ground? And what, what's the phasing of it, such that it, it could be a potentially affordable option for the town? So there's a lot of pieces that go into that study, and that's what the DEIR is for.
This DEIR, for my, Mr. Chairman, how far is that? Are we being conservative as to our approach right now, or should we be expanding it a bit to get a little bit further along?
Well, the.
What's being proposed, as opposed to where should we really be at? You know, should we be going a little bit beyond what?
In terms of analysis, or?
Yeah.
The, the DEIR is, was, the scope was put together based on a document that we put together in the fall called the ENF. It was basically the first, this is what we're thinking about doing, and then we got a lot of comment back from all the groups that have, and they said, well, if you're going to look at that, here's all the things we want analyzed. So it, it contains all those analysis points. We get through the draft DEIR, and at that point, people will review it, and they do comment back, and sometimes you have to do a further analysis, but I can't guess what that further analysis is. My, my role is to try to answer all those questions as thoroughly and comprehensively as possible, so that they don't say, well, what about this? And already, we have our, the list of questions is already defined, and that's why we went through this process upfront, rather than kind of guessing, going down the road, and then having this stumble period afterwards, which can happen, and happens very frequently now, where people do a lot of planning upfront, they get to the end, and then they, people say, well, did you think about this? Why didn't you think about that? And you haven't had much stakeholder involvement up to this point. We're kind of flipping them around a little bit, so that we get to the answer and not have any questions left from people.
Steve, on the DEIR, the, the original estimates for the water and the wastewater were two hundred thousand dollars. So you heard earlier that the, the water is going to be about two hundred and six thousand, that's a capital expense that would probably be bonded, and it would be paid for out of the Water Enterprise. The wastewater end, we had about two hundred and thirty-six thousand in the.
Yeah, the original estimate was two hundred grand.
Right.
It came in at two sixty-six. We have two hundred and thirty-six thousand in the Berry Fund, so about thirty grand short of covering that full cost of the estimate.
So that's the other consideration. Greg will be putting together, basically, recommendations associated with that, along with the rest of the capital at the future meeting.
Just the two hundred thousand, just a placeholder?
No.
Due to the, you know, that wasn't, they didn't have time to do the analysis to give the right number, so it's not a cost overrun, it's just, just now we plug it into the process.
Appreciate the explanation.
So this moves the water and the wastewater down the path. And the water.
Approximately eighteen months, depending on how, how many people want to get involved. You want to try to keep that relatively restrained, but the more you restrain it, the more trouble you end up in the end, so it's a, it's a tough balancing act, to make sure that people are feeling like you're, you're putting forth the appropriate analysis, and that they, they don't feel like that anything's left out, but you don't want them to get, you know, kind of be driving the project, and that, and it's a really tough.
In the cast of characters that we're dealing with, that we're looking to include?
Well, we have Ipswich River.
Right.
The DEP would be involved, the people at RMEPA, which is the Executive Office of Environment and Energy.
MWR.
MWRA, Andover, there's going to be a lot of parties that are going to be very interested in this project and process, and, as, as well as the citizenry here.
Just from, I think you're driving at is how certain is this number?
No, no, I'm just saying.
We've got very positive results from MWRA to support us, all state agencies, because we're going to do something to bring water into the Ipswich, they seem on board, so it's, even the Ipswich River President, I met him last week, they think it's a good project. So it's not your typical project, where everybody doesn't like it, and there's a lot of opposition, as Paul's kind of alluding to. It's, it has some good benefits to the community, and the Ipswich River and the MWRA is dying to sell more money, more water, so they have been actively helping us. So it's.
You say eighteen, eighteen-month study?
Yeah, approximately eighteen months to get to, to finalize them and get them published for comment, basically. And then there's another process, step period after that, finalize them, but we're very hopeful.
Typically, that's a lot smaller, the DEIR.
Yes. Yes, that effort, that effort can be a lot easier.
This is the big step on the wastewater, this is a large sum of money, and there's obviously larger financial considerations to the community right now. So in the wastewater committee, that, that's why Mike suggests that we come here, because this is a big sum of money, and it will have visibility. So do we want to go down this path now, or not?
I mean, the, the reason to hold them together is you have, the opportunity is to, to link and, and have the water in and the water out, you know, this water, the water and the wastewater together, and they're, because of that linkage, it allows them to happen easier. If you separate them out, they're looked at discreetly, and while there's a lot of people that are okay with the water in, there's a number of people that are going to be challenged with water out, if they're looked in a separate manner. Where we put them together, that, that makes it a lot easier to put forth a good plan and a good program.
Paul, can you tell us what happens if we, you know, we go the eighteen months, we have a plan all set up, and we're not prepared to spend any more money, you know, because of other situations we have going on right now? How good is the plan?
Well, I, I mean, there's never a succinct timeframe put to these. They do go stale over a period of time. I, I believe that working in constant with you to, to kind of generate what, what makes sense, what's implementable, you know, so that we could say, all right, the water makes sense to go now, but maybe we put the wastewater off for some period of time, and that's the plan going forward, and that, and that's how it's shown and developed, then that's in a, becomes the approved plan. Everyone's on board with that, and then as long as we implement along those framework, we should be safe. You know, it, it doesn't mean that somebody doesn't come up with another regulation and an interim that you have to satisfy. And that, that's the danger always, but as long as, you know, the program makes sense to people, it, it should be. And there are even ways to extend it, such as something called the Notice of Project Change, where you can put forth and say, well, we don't feel comfortable hitting this date, can we extend it for a couple of years? People will be allowed to comment, and it does, does create some challenge, but generally they're okay, they're pretty easy to get.
Yeah, and, you know, Mike, sorry, Steve, but, you know, I think everybody on the wood knows where I feel about it. I'm in favor of both projects. The problem I have is, is, you know, spending half a million dollars on just, you know, to submit the plans, and then not being able to afford to do both in a timely manner, and then having to come back later on and redo the wastewater plan. My assumption is water's going to be a lot easier to get through than, than wastewater.
You're correct, yeah. I, I get, one thing I guess we can be cognizant of, as we're developing, moving forward on this, say, there is some feedback that it looks a little different on the wastewater side, just working with you to, to manage that, that side of things, and say, a decision comes up, we just can't, you know, this isn't going to be able to, something that happens right now. You know, maybe we can get you information earlier, so that we can, you can help you make those decisions, before we kind of expend all, all the money down that road, just, because I don't, I don't want to waste your money. I know you've put a lot of money already, planning for this type of stuff, and for me, it, you know, the, at the ultimate is the endpoint, the affordability of the project, and I understand, it's a big bill to put in to my hands to kind of say, you know, put this forward, and you're not sure that it's, it's something you're ready to go with, you know, you might need five years or ten years, or something like that.
Again, I think it's something that we've all been advocating since nineteen eighty-eight. We've all been advocating it, and now it comes down to affordability and implementation, and to me. And to me, on the wastewater, most of the resistance we've had over the years is the state DEP's insistence on a different implementation plan than what we'd like to do here locally from a cash flow standpoint. So, my big question comes is, is the state more amenable these days to allowing us to help develop wastewater treatment, whether it be internally here within the town confines, or to help the MWRA or Greater Lawrence, or let us do the commercial area first, rather than having to tackle Martin's Pond area first, which is not going to generate the cash flow necessary to sustain the system going forward?
I think that's a key part of putting the plan together, is saying, looking at those needs, because talking with DEP, they were very happy to see this approach of bringing it in and out, and they understand that you have a lot of businesses that are being impacted, that have to replace their septic systems, that are under order, and they would like to see that. I think what, and I don't know the specifics of where the plan got pushed around in the past, but I think if you put together a logical order, and it's not solely based on, you know, "All right, we want to do improvements to these properties," it's based on, here's the benefit that the environment will see, here is how the cash flow will work, and layer them all together in this program, such that it's not, "All right, we're going to throw sewers out everywhere, and Martin's Pond is really bad." Everything I've read says Martin's Pond is bad because the lot sizes are small, not, there hasn't been any linkage with the water quality, at least in the reports that I've read. It doesn't mean that it's not occurring.
But the pushback that we've always gotten, correct me if I'm wrong, is the timing of what portion of the community's going to be done at what particular time, and it hasn't been conducive to making it work financially. And the state has seemed to be devoid of that, saying, you know, "It's environmental, it's environmental, it's environmental." You know, it comes down to either we, you know, we approach it and we start doing something, or we do nothing, because we can't afford-
Right, right.
-what they've been advocating. So, unless there's been a change of heart, a change of mind, and again, if we can get some indication that they are changing-
I mean, I know that there is a change even from this idea of, you know, having the water and wastewater out at this point, just because you, it was a line in the sand previously.
Because to me, like Mr. Fode said, you know, it's nice to have the plan and have it ready to go, but if it's not affordable, and we can't sell it to the community, and it's going to be very difficult over the next five years to sell anything to this community, maybe the next 20 years, but the next five years for sure, and this would be a huge undertaking, why are we spending a half a million dollars, $260,000, for something that's going to be outdated and outmoded, and we'll have to go back and do it again? You know, and unless, I mean, for me sitting here, for as long as I sit here, unless I see some movement on the state's part, you know, I'd like to see where this is going to get us, and how much time it's going to buy us, in order to implement a plan that's going to make it affordable.
I'm asking Paul from a practical standpoint. I think the states want to see the whole plan approved. That means a town meeting, vote to approve funds for the whole thing, not segmenting it. So, I think we'll be going to town meeting for the large amount, no matter how you sequence it. I know the preference is to do it one way, but I'm pretty sure-
I don't know what the specific challenges were coming up in the past.
Okay, so you're talking about the water?
And wastewater.
No, no, I-
Plan. Wastewater, I assume it's 30 million. I don't think they're going to say, "Okay, you can build this segment only first, then wait and do the next one, next one."
Oh, I would certainly believe that any program that was put together-
They're going to dictate.
You couldn't put together all the elements and then have them hope that, you know, it was going to be implemented, you know, based on-
No, no, but they're going to have a significant amount of input as to how we approach it, and what's going to be done for a second, how we're going to phase it in. And that's been the big, one of the biggest issues, is the phasing in, and where do we begin?
Well, I'll never put that in writing, Steve. They seem more flexible now than before.
No.
Also, the players are- I can't guarantee it, but it was, from what I understand before, it's absolutely not, you must do it this way, you must do it in community. There seem to be, DEP, and you've been at some of the meetings, they're never going to tell you, "Yes, we can do it the way you want," but they seem more flexible to us doing it, because it has a benefit.
I mean, I don't know if this was an understood focus of the prior plans or not, you know, kind of making sure that the data was there to show that that's the way, and understanding that that's what I would be looking for, as I'm, you know, looking to put together a program, is what are the benefits from putting the sewer here versus there? And weighing those out, because if I can show, and I, you know, I believe that I can-
That's the key.
-you know, the problems in this area, and how they make the water quality in the Ipswich worse than making, you know, minor changes in this other area, either through flow or loads, or, you know, all those, putting all those factors together, you know, I can't guarantee it, but I believe I can, I can put together a program that is, may fit more of what you're looking for.
I went to a seminar last week, the one that you and I email back and forth about, is actually a Woods Hole, federal-funded study of the Parker and Ipswich River, figuring about the nitrogen coming down the Ipswich River from all the septic systems, and what it does to the fish and the clams. So, literally, you could say, I asked the woman, "Well, if we did this, and put less nitrogen into the ground, no matter where it came from, Martin's Pond, up here on Main Street, that's a benefit to the Ipswich River." So, the science out there that kind of supports, we're doing a benefit no matter how we sequence it.
Mr. Sear.
First of all, I'm on the same page as Joe, is, you know, clearly, the water's upfront, the wastewater is going to come later, you know, we all have these issues of how to phase it in, and all of this, especially with the school project and the cost of it in everybody's minds at the moment. My real question is, on these two studies that need to be done, right, I think I heard you say that they ought to be done together because of-
There is actually an efficiency, because there are parts of the studies that are similar. They have a lot of overlap. When you're doing a, looking at the water use, so you look at water use and where the properties are, and looking at mapping and whatnot, so all that, that stuff can happen at one time. There's a certain efficiency in looking at the permits that are required to do construction, or what improvements are required, so, because the state, and you guys don't want us to, you know, have to put a water pipe in, and then five years later, dig up that road and put a sewer pipe in, or-
Yeah, but what can they-
We may have to.
We might have to, but, but-
But what concerns me is the other comment that you made about things going stale. So, you know, I look at the water from a timing point of view, based on the MWRA getting, even if we were ready to go today, getting the piece they have to do, the negotiations that have to be made for shuttling the water through Reading, and so on and so forth, is that we're out in a five-year timeframe, and the wastewater is out at least another five past that, or more. So, the question is, in terms of this cap, you know, our capital plan, and the amount of money that we have and our priorities, should we prioritize the two studies together, or should we do one and do the other, you know, downstream when we're prepared to move ahead? That way, it won't go stale.
There-
And I think, you know, you've said two things, and-
Again, I can't predict five years from now that someone's not going to come in and say that, you know, "You need to analyze one of these facets of the wastewater plan" to understand that. But I know several communities that went on sewer programs, the town of Shelsford, they completed the study, and they voted all the money, and it took them over 20 years to sewer the community, and they were operating off that single plan the whole time. I did a project in Framingham, which was largely sewered, but it was a, it was a planning aspect to improving their sewer, they had a lot of problems with it. And they're in the seventh year, and it's going to take another seven or 10 years to complete that plan. So, it's not impossible to have a long-term plan. You're just in a slightly different situation where you, where you don't have these utilities, and where, you know, you're looking to, I don't want to say stretch, but define that time span when it's appropriate to put it into implementation, so that you know, this is when we're going to be able to afford it. And, you know, again, the plan goes forward, it gets published, people agree with it, and it says, "This is when we want to do it." They're going to comment back, they're going to say, "Well, it's too long a distance, they've separated these two plans out." You're going to know at that point whether or not that was appropriate. I can't predict it right now that people are going to say that, because it's not common that the two are put together in this fashion, it really isn't. It's just by virtue, the only clear way that I see that you can easily get wastewater out of this basin and be able to treat it in an affordable manner, is under this format right now of having these two together. If you were to do the water separately, and then come back five to 10 years later and try to do the wastewater, you're going to come back and have those same issues that you're having today, and people are going to be looking at, they're going to say, "Well, it's a separate issue now. I don't care if you're a major importer into the basin, I don't care that the river's that much better." There's more and more stress every year on people to maintain their systems, and maintain their boundaries, and not bring water in and out, and I don't see that going away, I see that getting even harder as communities go down the road. So, your opportunity, I just see your opportunity is down.
Can I just, just real quick, echo what Paul's saying here? In 1991, we did an inter-basin transfer to bring a million and a half gallons a day of water into this basin. When we went to look at wastewater, how much credit did we get for that million and a half gallons? We got zero.
Zero.
You know, we need to link this together in the state's mind, that North Reading's water plan and their wastewater plan are linked together. So, to put, yeah, water can move forward without the wastewater going forward, wastewater can't go forward without the water. But we need to have that, them two linked together, so five years down the road, people don't, you know, the leadership at DEP changes, and people forget, "Oh, well, North Reading's water was this, we don't know anything about where the wastewater, we need to bring them together, together at one time." This is our opportunity to do that.
Right. The issue, the issue-
Mr. Frisco?
Fode always gets it over me.
Go ahead.
No, it's okay.
Good.
No, no, I'm just kidding. The thing that, I agree, Paul, everything you're saying, and Mike also, my problem is, I just feel that that's going to be, the wastewater, the IR is going to be mothballed for a number of years, and it's, you know, and to use Mike's argument, you're going to have a new regime in DEP in three years, and you may have to start over. But it, we, I mean, they are connected, but they're not. I mean, water right now, as I think everybody here can agree, is probably more important, and needs to be done immediately, and can be done quicker.
Yes.
If we were going to, if wastewater was our priority, I would agree with you that yes, they both have to be linked, because you have to pull water from someplace else, but I'm not so sure they have to be linked if water's our priority. And, again, I'm, like anybody else, is a big proponent of it. The thing that scares me is we're going to spend another $300,000 in six years to redo the DEIR.
I mean, I wish I could guarantee-
No, I know you can't, and I'm not, I'm not trying to put it in-
I don't see anything that doesn't get in our way that says this, you know, that putting forth a plan and having everyone buy into it at the end of this, doesn't give you some, you know, basis to continue on forward. But, you know, I, there are programs out there that I've seen where, you know, they make a change to it, they go down the road, and they, things get, kind of sit around for a while, and they come back, they drag them back out, and they say, "Oh, we want to change it a little." Usually, people will work with you, but if there's somebody lined up against you-
Right.
It's, it's like having a big development go forward, or not go forward, stall, and then having them come back, and, you know, people get to start asking questions again that you might thought had been answered, and-
And to go back to what Mr. Lurie said, I think, I think we are in a better situation now to be able to say, "Let's do 28 before Martin's Pond than we were back then," but, again, that can change, and when we're ready to go forward, which, you know, you're talking no less than five years anyway.
Yeah.
And, you know, it's important that we get that done before, because we can't, like, you know, Steve said, we can't afford to do that first, before 28.
Yep.
Just go ahead, Paul wants that score question, then I'll go after him.
You know, here we are, we're trying to make a key decision, and you've made a pretty good case for bringing and doing the two together, right? So, let's talk about the risk. Okay? The risk of not bringing them together means that, you know, you have some exposure associated with that, and you've made a point of that.
I think you're right.
Is that a higher, is that a higher risk, in your opinion, than the risk of mothballing this thing and having to do a whole bunch of things over again? Are we wasting our money? You know, I mean, you know-
Where I see the challenge in most of this is, is knowing what that dollar amount is, and what's affordable, putting together a plan that will work for the community, and being able to implement that. I don't, I don't see that, I see that as more the challenge ultimately than the risk to going forward with the DEIR now, because there is a timeframe to complete this in, and then there's another step after that. We could be well down the road and still be in a mode that says you're okay to go ahead and do this, in a five or even longer year timeframe. I mean, we can, we can define that timeframe and stretch things as needed in order to accommodate that. I'm more worried, I believe the risk is if you don't do the wastewater right now, you're going to be back to, you know, in-town options only, you know, if they're separated. Why, why wouldn't that option be available? Because they're now separated, and now you have to, your permitting process, right now, you have this permitting process, the Inter Basin Transfer Act allows for you to bring water in, and then any, what's called a secondary transfer, where you bring, move water out, there's no permitting required to that. It's, 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 it's all covered by your first-
But Paul, it's only if you do the work at the same time. I mean, because if we do, if we do the water in five years, and then, and then put the wastewater on hold for additional five years, like Mr. Vessery said, we're not going to, we couldn't get, we couldn't get no-
But if it's part of the same EIR and the same process, and it's just, we're talking about two different implementation plans, one is water looks like this, wastewater looks like this, this is an affordability, this is how this makes sense, and people say, "Okay, we're okay with this." And as long as you say, "This is our plan, this is our program, we have to do it this way, otherwise, we may not be able to do it all together." You know, where you have them linked now, that, that will, that will prove to be what, you know, what works going forward. But separating them right now, you now have to get an IBTA to get wastewater out, which that was one of the clear messages in the letters that I read regarding the CWP, was there's not a chance you would get one of those, if they were split. Even though you are a benefit to the basin, you're bringing your water, you're making Ipswich River flow better. They'd still look at them as separate, and the folks on that end, that run that part of the business, you know some of them, they are very, they really want to keep water local. They think if the water's generated here, it needs to stay here. They're the drafters of the swimming program, which is one of these water programs, which is kind of another layer on this, where they're really cramping down on people that pull water out of the ground, and they're, they're getting, you know, kind of in their business and saying, "You can't pull any more water out of the ground," and it's a real challenge, and so they, they would be in the way.
Part of this is, we're saying, "We're going to bring water from MWRA." We will abandon our right to take water from the Ipswich River. I mean, if we do that for the water now, and then come back in the wastewater, we have no cards. That's our ace. You know, I don't understand it, but that's the only way to-
I agree, I agree, but if you're not doing it at the same time, you played your hand.
No, I think what Paul says, we go through the EIR the same way, you're going to have two separate implementation plans. If they buy off on the plan, water first, sewer five years, if they buy off on that plan, there's your plan.
And you're telling me that if they buy off that plan, they can't make changes to it after, you know, "We put water in now, of course they can."
Well, if it lingers on for 20 years, of course.
Not 20, but-
Yeah.
I, again, I haven't, I haven't seen them get, get into it at that level, because you have a plan in place, it's approved. I, I don't know what stumbling block is going to be five years out, I really don't.
Unfortunately, I have a special-
I mean, you're, you're, I don't want to say you're a special situation, but you have unique qualities.
I haven't told that before.
You have unique qualities.
You mean a year ago?
Both.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I think we are in a unique situation, where we have to act on both. I don't think we have a choice. I think we have to learn from our lessons in the past. When we, when we spent all that money on wastewater, and looking at an in-town solution, was really only focused on wastewater, we never really took an investment in doing both. And I think that was a mistake. If you talk to some of the guys from the old group, they'll tell you that. I think they made a tactical error in doing that both. I think we have to look at what's the long-term health of this town, and I think we have to invest in putting these plans together. I don't see as we have a choice. I, you know, of course, water has to be the priority, it's the simplest to do, probably
It's the simplest to do, probably the least expensive to do, but to do it separately and two separately, I think we're wasting our money. I, I do think we're taking a bigger risk in. We are. I, I think we are. Okay? We can just agree to disagree on this, Joe. But we have been years talking about wastewater and the long-term health of this town. If we continue to turn a blind eye to the issues associated with wastewater, this town is not going to be able to pay its bills. We need to find solutions. We did that study. We spent $50,000, the taxpayers' money, to do that study. We should use it and learn from it. And I think that proves the fact that we made this investment, at some point, it's going to have a payback. And we, and I understand, we don't have the money to do it right now. But I think we do have the money to invest in these studies because it will sell, set up a roadmap now that we can follow when we're all long gone, that somebody else can continue on with it. Because right now, we don't have any.
But there's no guarantee we can carry on with it, Michael.
But there's no guarantee that we, we won't be able to either.
When do you think we'll be at a point where we can afford to do wastewater?
Ten years from now.
At least.
Maybe more.
At best.
All right. So, so you're willing to take a risk that we invest $265,000 in this plan and hope that it's still going to be viable 10 years from now?
No, I think, I, I looked at it from the point of view of, you can do A or B, and there's a higher risk by going down the B route than the A route. The A route is to bring the two plans together, get everything in place, lay out the, the plan. And there is a risk that we have to redo.
Some portions.
Some portions of wastewater. To me, that's a lower risk than to do them separately based on what these experts are telling me.
Right. And, and look at his, and historically, it hasn't worked out for us going a single path. I think we have to plow a new path. Yeah, it's risky, I agree. But you know what? We, we all met, we talked about our strategic plan and where we think the future of this town, right, relies really on these two resources.
I just don't want to waste, waste more money on.
I don't either.
Do they waste enough of money on studies that?
But I think doing it in parallel.
Well, this is, this is not necessarily a study. This is part of the permitting process.
Yeah.
I mean, it's more than just a study.
Some of it is a leap of faith, you know, but we're doing it based on, we're getting the educated analysis and recommendations. Okay? We're not sitting here just doing it in a vacuum.
This gets us closer, I mean, I was challenged when I got here about the wastewater to make it work. This is going to get us the closest to, we can to design it to get shoveling ground than we've ever been.
Right. Can't put a shoveling ground without money.
I know, but it gets us closer to that point.
Right.
I mean, right now, we're just talking about sewage. We're, we're not even close. This would get us within striking distance. It might not be feasible.
No, and listen, I'm not, I'm not saying I'm opposed to it. I just want to make sure that everybody's, you know, everybody here who's going to vote on it is aware that just by doing this doesn't mean it's a done deal. That's all I'm saying. And I'm not saying that.
A lot of the stuff, though, if there's some changes, a lot of the stuff will not change. The majority of the whole 266.
Yeah.
A lot of it will not, there might be other widgets that got to change, but it's not 100% wasted.
It could be other pieces, it could be, generally what I, what I could see is they, they might ask for supplemental or something like that.
Yeah, I'm willing, and I think it's a worthy risk. I think it's a worthy risk on this board.
It's not 100% wasted, I guess. No pun intended.
Mr. Lurie.
First of all, I feel the best with some inferences made that, you know, what we did in the past was a waste and all of that. The times have changed, the dynamics have changed, the opportunities have changed. Over the years, up until recently, MWR wasn't even an option for this community. Wasn't an option. State was not going to allow town and authority to tie into wastewater with the MWR. We were told year after year after year, don't even, there was a federal court order, there was a whole thing, it would have been all expanded. Things have changed. For us getting the water, there wasn't an appetite here to go to the MWR for the cost of water. Because a lot of people in this community have relatives that live within the MWR. And the cost for water and sewer far exceeded the cost of water in a separate system here. You know, and people didn't have an appetite. Things have changed over the years.
No, I heard you say your water rates and I, you know, they're, you know, very high.
Yeah. But things have changed. Again, the, the cost of operating our, our water system here has escalated because we're purchasing water now from Andover. We're not producing our own. So the dynamics have changed, the opportunities have changed. It appears as though we have a very good opportunity now to tie into a regional situation, and we look north, we'll look south. So what we've spent in the past has not been for naught and not been a waste. So I just want to.
No, and our hope is, to the extent that we can, is to reuse as much of that as part of the moving forward as appropriate. You know, there are lots of it is, is usable, but just changing the, the dynamic, I mean, using it as alternatives analysis is important. And we can look, show, here's an alternative and why it does or doesn't work and use a lot of that information. That's, that's part, you know, inherent in this process.
And again, based upon your input this evening, Dick and Mark, it appears as though it may be worth taking the risk and spending a quarter of a million dollars to simultaneously run tandem, you know, with, with the project. But to Joe's point, you know, it's, it's a crapshoot from an affordability standpoint and the town's willingness to buy into a program, combined with the state's willingness or whoever's going to be approving this thing, to agree with that of a timeline we can afford to, to implement it. So, you know, at this point, I, I'm willing to move forward with the, in tandem and spend the $266,000 because it does provide us far more opportunities to move this whole project forward. And as Bob said, the risks associated with separating them and waiting are far greater than, cost-wise, probably more.
And implementation, I don't, I don't think you would have a sewer option at least.
And I don't disagree. And to Mark's point, and he brings up some past history here, you know, we did what we thought was a good thing.
It was the only option you had.
Bring it from the Meramec River, bring it into the Institute of Watership, which is stressed and got absolutely no recognition and credit, no matter how much we crowed about it and, you know, pouted our chest and said, hey, what about it, what about it? And they go, yeah, that's not important. You know, we've got that now. Now there's something. And all of our options were internal in town. And I'm glad the opportunities are here. We had to spend some money and invest in it to find out exactly what we can do and see if we can get them to buy into a program that's affordable for us to.
Interesting. There is one, the cost of waste, too, I'm not sure we amplified, is, as the town went through the Water Management Act permit negotiation, it costs, costs a quarter million dollars. By being part of MWR, we're a small widget, small piece of the larger system, so we're not 100% responsible for those kind of permits. Same on the wastewater side. If we take the wastewater tube and we're a small volume and say it's great alarms, we're a small piece of that pie, so our environmental liability is dramatically reduced.
Mr. Frisco?
Just to clarify, that the, the alternate water source is MWR, but the wastewater is not MWR.
Right. Well, we'll have to analyze that one a little further.
We will.
But the likely alternative right now is great water.
It's no, it's right.
I get wastewater from MWR.
No. I can't say that out loud.
I can't.
Okay?
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Worth hanging around. Now you don't have to come back next week.
Thank you for sticking around.
Thank you.
Let's go through the learn articles?
Of course.
Yeah. We have a few things to do.
The only two things we're here for is, I think, Mark and I agree with the IMA, Mr. Angel, that one single leader, I guess, I apologize for some confusion. It would be easy for us to do it a different way, but we understand what everyone wants to, we're, we're, I think, with that. Swamp Pond, is that the land where the water tank is on?
We're not, we're going to table that tonight. But maybe, Greg, can you answer that?
It's, there's, it's all one parcel, but it would be the land to the north side of Swamp Pond Road. The south side, we understand, is the water.
Wouldn't be selling the water to town?
No. We also have some.
Maybe.
We have a revenue generator up there, but it would be the land on the, the north side of Swamp Pond Road.
Right.
Just as part of this. Because we're just going to take a water. Water is part of town, man.
The south town water.
Understand that.
It, it shows up as one, one single parcel.
But we're talking, just to clarify again for my purposes, so we're talking about part of it being the school property that is now town and what was originally taken for reservoir.
Yes, it's the, the northern piece.
How many of the two? Not the town, not, not the school?
No, it's the, it's the, it's the municipal piece that's the first piece on the left opposite, just beyond the housing authority property.
It's not the piece you're talking about, the station from reservoir purposes. It's the school property.
It's a yellow piece. That's the school box right there. I think that's conservation land for the Louis Town.
What's?
There's yellow here?
Yellow.
This is the parcel for the school.
Okay, that's now town.
It's all town.
Now, but now it's under our control.
That's an aid for the.
They gave it up.
Can't hear it come up.
They gave up control of that parcel, gave it to general government?
Yes.
Correct. So it's now general government.
I think the pink, I think that's conservation land, I think the blue is town land. So I guess apparently this.
Part of that, part of that blue is town land was also taken for Mill Meadow. Conservation is conservation land. But the other parcel, was part of it was taken, acquired as part of the Mill Meadow project, building a reservoir. It would, no, I'm talking, it would be the blue piece.
This is where the dam for Mill Meadow is going to be at the end of that. There's a problem there. This is all conservation land, that was the school land.
So the blue is the conservation land?
It, it looks blue, yes.
Blue is conservation. The red and the pink is general government. Apparently this now should be pink, we got pink in that.
Right. And what we're, we're going to talk about is the pink.
Yes.
Not the, not the, not the yellow.
Of the old.
And not, and not the green. Pink. Thank you.
Article one?
No recommendation, article one.
I gotta get to it.
Take no action on that.
That's in our regular packet, right?
Yes.
Article two.
Article two, the amount of the snow and ice deficit is 123,000. The recommendation is to utilize available funds in the form of free cash.
Hey, that's pretty good, if that's all it is.
That's right.
How much was it?
We agree with that, this is 20, yeah.
123,000.
So, so the public knows that this is what, we had, I believe, 90 inches of snow this year. We spent 175, which was in the snow and ice budget, $250,000, which was in.
123,000.
Reserve.
Reserve. And now, so the deficit is only 123,000 for total, the snow and ice, given the amount of weather storms that we had over the winter was $548,000. So, people question why so early in the season we have to allow the department to overspend the snow and ice budget? Well, it's the one item that we can overspend, and so historically, we underbudget in that particular area. And so, but the total cost for removal of snow and ice this past week was $548,000, which, my recollection is, two years ago, when we had probably about the same amount of snow, was probably a couple hundred thousand dollars more than that.
500?
Well, congratulations to DPW and administration, and sorry, Dick left. You seem to have managed well, considering it, so.
Yeah, I was, I was surprised that deficit was at the amount where it was.
Does a portion of that evolve the reimbursement?
No.
For the October storm?
No.
Nope? It's not net of that?
The reimbursement for the storm is about 62, $63,000, and that money has not been received. So that money was not considered to be snow deficit at that point. And we do have a request pending with FEMA, which we hope will yield about 62 to 63,000, which could reduce.
The deficit?
No.
If you get word in check?
No. The, the best thing for that money to do is to come in after June 30. And there's some reasons for it. What we wanted to do is roll into general fund revenue, not to go back to reimburse the department that incurred that expense. So I would ask the board to consider recommendations if we go through this, it might be easier just to knock off, knock them off one at a time.
Absolutely. Move to recommend Article two.
I have a motion.
A second.
I have a second. Any discussion? Hearing done. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We yet, have yet to determine an amount of funds to be transferred into the debt capital stabilization fund. I'll ask you to postpone a recommendation on that. Article four will be for the, the purposes of adding money to the water stabilization fund. We also had an article further in the warrant that was taking money from water department retained earnings and transferring it into this fund. The two articles will be combined into Article number four. So Article number four will be to add from water department retained earnings.
It's 22, Greg, that's, can be eliminated.
Yes, I'm sorry, that's exactly what it is. And the amount is.
268, 187.
268, 187.
You'd like to take a recommendation on that article?
I move to recommend.
Second.
Motion and a second.
Two motions and two seconds.
Oh, sorry. We didn't hear it on this side.
Any discussion? Hearing done. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No action under Article five yet. Article six to take from overlay surplus, sum of $32,619, and it's used to fund a deficit in the fiscal year 2009 overlay account.
What was that number again, Greg?
32,619, and the source of funds is overlay surplus.
Come from the surplus.
Oh, the fiscal year, so the fiscal year shown here is fiscal year 2012 overlay account. It's actually fiscal year 2009, so we'll make that as a change. And this relates again to that Verizon litigation that the town had gone through.
So it's Article six, right?
Looking for a recommendation?
Please.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing done.
Aye.
Unanimous.
The, no action on article seven, where the finance department is coming up with the final number, and I'll have that for your next meeting. Article eight, nine...
Which is really the beginning of the fiscal 2000, annual town meeting. Was the first seven, or...
Used to be a special.
Used to be a special.
Which we no longer need to have, so we avoid the issue of a...
I move to recommend article eight. Oh, it's already marked, recommend. Did we vote on it, though?
No, we didn't think you'd say no.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, I think.
Does everyone vote?
Yeah, okay.
Article nine, 10, and 11, the standard articles that we have before the board each year.
Move to recommend.
We already did it, didn't we?
No, they just...
He was taking an educated guess.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Nine through 10.
Turned out to be pretty good, didn't it? Article 12, the amount is to be determined, as you know, there was a letter that came from the governor's office indicating the amount that we'd receive in chapter 90 is about 747,000, or an increase of a half, excuse me, a quarter million dollars. Regardless of that amount, we still need authorization to be able to expend it. So it's an action just to the board to acknowledge and allow authorization for spending of chapter 90 funds.
Move to recommend.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing done.
That's just authorizing it for us to obtain the money, we're not authorizing usage in Homewood Streets, because we still haven't gotten...
Absolutely, you're correct.
Okay.
All right, sorry.
Correct.
Yes.
Anything further? Hearing done. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Recommend no action under article...
Mr. O'Leary made the motion, Mr. Foley is second.
13 and 14.
No, he can't. His chair.
Article 15 is items that are to be funded from free cash that will be extracted from the budget and put into this article. This is the same procedure that we followed last year. So the amounts are 180,846 from free cash for the purposes of funding the one-time 15% longevity bonus.
Repeat it?
Repeat again?
And this is the last year? This is the... This would be the last year of the contract that would allow for this longevity bonus to be paid? Correct. The 15% longevity bonus ceases June 30, 2014. And the other item that's requested in this, this particular amount is 32,000, excuse me, 33,897, representing the final payment under the COPSFAS reimbursement. So the total transfer from free cash requested is 214, 743. And those items will be pulled out of the budget and put into this article. And finance planning teams, in favor of pulling those out?
Yes.
Yep, good. Excellent.
Move to recommend.
A motion?
Second.
A second. Any further discussion? Hearing done. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
I'll present my capital recommendations to the board next week, and you can vote them at that time. So no action. Article 17, retirement obligations, raise and appropriate the sum of 250,000 for the purposes of retirement obligations. And this is for the town and for the schools.
Move to recommend.
A motion, and I have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing done. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
I only hear it by voice.
No action under article 18 and 19. Those amounts are to be determined as we get closer to the June town meeting date. Similarly, I want to speak with the DPW director about the intent and the amount for articles 20 and 21. 22 is, is to be removed and scratched out of the warrant, so that is out. Article 23 is 20,000, and this is exactly what we intended to do at the town meeting, special town meeting last year that didn't take place. These are monies that are in the current fire department budget for the purposes of the paramedic education cost. Those monies will be pulled out and put into a special article, and 20,000 will be reduced from the fire department operating budget for this year. So it's...
For the current year?
From the current year. Because we don't need those monies, because what we want to do is we want to carry forward an amount of money from this year's budget to next year. The only way we can do that is by pricking that money to a special article. We can't transfer it from this year's budget to next year's budget. And that's why we have to go through this mechanic. And we don't have to reference the fiscal year 2013 budget? We do indeed, and that's a note that I've made here, is that that's the source of funds.
Okay.
Move to approve?
Second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yes, quickly. So you said we're going to be doing this every year?
No. No.
I couldn't hear you down here, I'm so sorry.
No, this is, this is, I would, would hope that this would be the last year that we would do it.
Okay.
It's just a matter of timing, the number of people that are going through the paramedic training.
Got it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, 30, 31, 32. We could do...
I move to recommend articles 24 through...
32.
Two.
I have a motion and a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing done. All in favor?
Aye. Though we agreed to delete 33, for now.
No. The two, we agreed to delete, dealt with...
Civil service.
This is the retired, really, Joe Lewis in the restaurant, we ended up paying that 60 grand, too.
Yeah, I thought, I don't know, I had different notes. I thought we were gonna have some discussion on this with, with the chief and the unions as well, before we went forward with it, but that's fine.
We don't have to make a recommendation tonight.
No, the two, there were two separate ones regarding civil service, regarding the chief as well as all other...
I thought we agreed on this one, too. But that's fine. I'm in support of doing it, so...
All right?
Make a motion.
Oh, I make a motion to recommend article 33.
A motion?
Second.
I have a second. Any further discussion?
I'm not so sure, I'm prepared to make a recommendation. If we're gonna put it to a vote, I'll probably vote no this evening, but...
Said that, Latrice, Steve.
I said I may vote no on this one, if we're gonna vote this evening on it. As far as the recommendation. To be honest with you, I haven't, again, I've thought about it, but I haven't come to a conclusion. I guess I, I know what the exposure has been in the past, and I know that it's exposed the town to, to a significant amount of cost. By the same token, these are for police and firefighters who are basically disabled on...
The issue is the employees now that are on Medicare don't need this.
Right.
So it's the people that are, that are, been our employees forever that would be impacted by the change, that are not on Medicare, that would be impacted by the change.
Do we, do we know yet how many, what our exposure is, based upon the current workforce?
You mean how many people are ineligible for Medicare benefits?
Right.
Now, that, that question actually was raised this morning, and we're gonna do some research on it.
I'll withdraw my second, Mike is...
And I'll withdraw my, my motion.
See if we can quantify it a little bit better.
Of course.
Thanks.
34, temporary moratorium on medical marijuana treatment centers.
Valley Road.
This is the format that was recommended by council.
I think I'd like to hear from CPC.
Of course. 35, top court voter registration sessions being held on a Friday rather than on a Saturday. So presently, when there's a special election, she's required to hold voter registrations on Saturday, the traffic is non-existent and light, so she'd like to be able to hold that on a Friday. And that's the purpose of this article.
So moved. I recommend that we approve.
Second.
Recommend, rather.
Motion and a second to recommend. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. O'Leary.
I don't know, I'm not, I mean, maybe state law allows us to, to do it, but to me, the public should be provided the opportunity to register to vote, what would normally be the normal course of action. I don't know how often it happens or occurs. To have the clerk's office open with one staff person on a Saturday, occur a little bit of overtime, but you gotta provide... I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
This would allow us to do it on a Friday, we'd still be open till...
Right.
Eight o'clock on a Friday, so you're really only saving four hours. No, not even. Three hours.
Three hours.
You're only saving three hours by doing it on a Friday as opposed to a Saturday.
That's right. I think it's probably easier for her to get the office staffed.
Right.
Holding it on a Friday versus on a Saturday.
It's a no-brainer to me, but... I'm supportive.
You're saving three hours every time. There's no reason why I think you'd want to do it.
Do I have a motion?
We have a motion.
They already have a motion.
I have a motion and a second.
Any further discussion? Hearing done. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
3-2, motion carries to recommend.
36, sale of alcoholic beverages prior to 12 noon on Sundays.
You misunderstood what I said.
Oh, I guess I did.
Article 36, is everyone here, Mr. Valiakonis? There was some overtalk?
Allowing sale of alcoholic beverages prior to 12 noon on Sundays. Requires a vote of town meeting, and this was a request that was put forth by some of the business establishments in town.
Hear a motion?
Move to recommend.
Have a motion. Do I hear a second? I'll second. Mr. Foley has seconded. Mr. Valiakonis?
It would only apply to restaurant-type of operations, so that's the intent of this is.
Mr. O'Leary made a motion, Mr. Foley seconded. Any further discussion?
Yeah, so it's, so it's hard alcohol and everything?
Yes. Yes, if someone were to have a beer and wine license, it would allow them to serve beer and wine prior to 12. All alcoholic beverages would, would also be allowed.
Any further discussion?
Just, you know, primarily for those that have, you know, brunches, and, you know, took it on holidays, Mother's Day, have some, have a mimosa, or a Bloody Mary, and...
You say, you say mimosa?
You know? Whatever it is.
I need some clarification.
No, mimosas got champagne, not orange juice.
All right?
No, I mean, champagne, not...
Mr. O'Leary?
Clarification, when you say only restaurants?
Yes.
No, only people that serve alcohol.
Pouring licenses.
Pouring licenses.
No liquor stores.
No, I understood that, but... So if somebody just has a bar, they could be serving on Sunday, beginning at 10:00.
That's correct.
That's four hours later than they opened in summer, though.
So the law, does the law allow for modification of that, or a...
Yeah, this is it.
No, you can't, you can't, you can't select, you can't select or deselect what you, you establish, and vice versa.
Do you, do you know if our neighboring towns are there?
I can do some research on that. I'd be happy to check it out.
I mean, I think we have very responsible local business establishments, and if they want to take advantage of this, this should be... That's all right. I think should, they should be allowed to do so.
I agree.
You know, if you don't have, if you don't have the votes, we don't have the votes, that's okay.
I don't disagree.
All in favor?
I don't see someone that would...
Hey, we gotta help businesses.
There may be a one out of a million, but I'm just misreading that.
Do we have a motion and a second?
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing done. All in favor?
Aye.
Why are you opening the phone? I'm just misreading you.
Just because of the silence.
Mike and I are on this, on the same page today as far as understanding each other's...
The silence was a little deafening, David, but that's all right, that doesn't matter.
37, this is a recommendation of your auditor, who has recommended that we set up a, an account under this section of law. It allows for more liberal investing policies, similar to the investment policies that exist for trust funds. So what we would do is, under this article, we would establish this account, and then we would transfer the balance from the OPEB stabilization fund, which was previously created, to go into this account.
Where are we gonna do that?
Right under this article. We're gonna do it all in, in one article.
So that needs to be reworded?
Yes. We just decided that this morning.
Okay.
I didn't hear that. More on 37, right?
This... Unless, unless we put this before the open sort of function for staffing and the whole...
Yeah, I, I thought, I thought was just to go ahead and fund it as we normally do in the prior article, and then under this one, just go ahead and transfer the balance.
So we're gonna wait till we have the new language, too?
No, no, the, again, the intent, the intent is to create this account, and then to transfer the balance from the OPEB stabilization fund into this. The language isn't in front of you, but the intent is to do exactly that.
Move to recommend as intended.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing done. All in favor?
Aye.
Rescinding the vote for the $1 million for the feasibility study, which was included within the budget that was approved for the total project. So this establishes the fact that we only have one bond authorization for the million-dollar feasibility study.
I move to recommend article 38.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing done. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Article 39 is a petition article. There's the, water department reports that there's approximately 800 linear feet of water main that would be required. The estimated cost, according to the water superintendent, is in the range of 33,800.
I'm gonna make a motion so we can discuss it.
I have a motion?
Approve article 39.
I have a motion? I have a motion.
Second for the purposes of discussion.
Okay. I have a second for purposes of discussion. Mr. Frisco.
So can you repeat that number again?
800 linear feet, and the estimated amount is 33,800.
And it's gonna be paid 100% by the owners?
No, the way this is, the way this is set up is that the town would, would fund it in its entirety.
Don't they usually, don't we usually do like a shared thing, where...
You're talking about like a betterment?
Well, we, maybe, we do half the cost, and the homeowners do half the cost?
I don't think we've ever done it for water.
Not for water.
Generally, we do it for roads. For roads.
The roads we've done it, but I don't recall, but...
Of course, it's an unapproved street development at one point in time. Why is it in a watered street?
It's not accepted street.
Right. I understand the water, the fire hydrants.
But, yeah, it's an unaccepted street, you know, it was a poor road, a lot of them around town with the fire hydrants.
This opens up Pandora's box.
Right. Yeah, I think we're setting a precedent, that's kind of weird.
Maybe what it does is it opens our eyes a little bit, where we should talk about, you know, in a methodical way of expanding, because these people are taxpayers, and they pay like everybody else, and at some point, we should be expanding, at least the hydrants and water service, in a methodical manner, how we prioritize, I don't know how we would do it, but...
Well, I know, myself, that money, I, I think we have some other priorities that can need that money much more than this. I mean, I feel for them, I think it's something that should be done over time, but I think, like you said, we should have a plan, how are we gonna do this? Because we prove this, it's just gonna open the floodgates.
Is this, there's a new home that I saw recently, built up in that area. Is that, was that in summer? I forgot to take a look. Does anyone else travel up Central Street, and you see it's on the left-hand side, it's sort of tucked in the back, it just, all of a sudden, I saw it there. No, I noticed it.
I think we needed an assessment of our overall town's exposure and...
Well, yeah, Swan Pond area is a, is a prime example, which, the people up there...
They're screaming.
Squawking for years.
They have.
About the need for fire hydrants and water service up there, and yet we had it just a couple of years back, where a house actually burned down, because we, you know, didn't have access to enough water to control it, and other homes up there were, that were at risk. So it might be easy to take care of Summit Road, and it is Swan Pond, but it doesn't make Swan Pond any less...
Right.
There's a significant number of homes up in Swan Pond area.
Yes, but, you know, I, I guess, you know, I look at it also from the point of view of, if there's a new development in town, and someone buys a house in that new development, and it has water, and it has fire hydrants, they've paid for it.
They've paid for it, that's right.
They've paid for it.
And they pay for it with their tax, you know, at all.
They pay for it to purchase that home.
They're saying they get it at a cheaper price, right? If you don't have water and these types of things, I'm assuming the value of the...
Right.
The homeowner is insurance society, too, if you haven't got a fire hydrant, with a 500.
Right.
I mean, yeah, that's an option they make.
So I, I think step one is to try to get a, an assessment of the total exposure, or areas in town that need water and...
Fire, fire hydrant.
Fire hydrants. And try to put a cost across it, see how we can go about doing it.
No, we're not gonna have that type of a town meeting, but just based on...
Well, that could be our response to the petition.
While we can sympathize, we can't prioritize it right now.
You can't be...
Picking and choosing.
You can't be picking and choosing. If you're gonna do it, then you, you can't refuse anyone else.
If it were, if it were to be funded, the recommended source would be the bond.
34,000 bucks?
Yep.
I'm not, I'm not in favor of it. It opens up a whole can of worms.
Well, the only reason why I'm saying that is it takes a two-thirds vote to be able to achieve that.
That doesn't affect my recommendation.
The second recommendation will be the fact that we're using all of the water department retained earnings to reimburse the water department stabilization fund, so...
Yeah, but that's a capital project.
That's what I'm saying, it's, this, we could...
But you could use that money, because that money's for capital.
The problem we have is the article, taking the water department stabilization money is before this, so when we get to this article, there'll be nothing left in the water department retained earnings, because they all would have been transferred, so the source of funds would be the water stabilization fund.
Are you saying that, that can be the explanation as why we're not in favor?
No, no, no. If it gets passed at a town meeting, if a town meeting's inclined to do it, where's the money gonna come from?
I'm just, exactly.
Oh, it can't come out of one of those funds. Those are CIP funds.
Yeah, I mean, we can recommend against it. It doesn't mean that they won't get done.
And I'm sure they need it over there. I'm sympathetic to them, but, you know, we have to look at the big picture on this.
Yeah, we're not gonna have the information in time to recommend or not recommend this, but it sounds like we're not gonna recommend it. But we're gonna need that information at a town meeting. That's what I'm leading up to. You know, yeah, I was getting late, you know, so it's not coming out the way I wanted to, but. So Greg, we're getting that information at a town meeting, so when people get up to, oh, I ain't gonna deny these people water and fire hydrant.
Could I ask you then, recommendation at town meeting?
We can recommend, or take a vote. We take a petition tonight.
Yeah, so you, I will.
Motion before us, this is to recommend.
Okay.
Eliminate second.
Eliminate?
Who's second? Oh, yeah, the second for discussion.
Just vote on the motion as before. Vote on the motion.
All in favor? All opposed?
Aye.
Motion feels unanimously.
So this vote cycle does not recommend.
Not recommend.
Five times. Oh, five.
I made a motion to recommend.
I seconded it for the purposes of discussion, which generally means, I'm not necessarily in favor of opposing at this point, just to talk about it.
Greg's got him on.
Okay.
All right.
You're doing a fine job, Joe. I assume.
Supplement number two, I assume.
Unless it's sleeping.
I have. The Finance Committee asked for the article on the debt capital stabilization fund to be amended to include payment of debt and also capital purchases.
Going back.
It just did. Name change?
What article number is that?
The, under Article.
Three?
Yes. Article three, the Finance Committee is recommending that the fund language be changed, that it also be used for the purposes of capital purchases. The other article that you discussed this evening was relative to the civil fingerprinting bylaw about adding additional licenses to the list of the ones that were approved at town meetings previously.
Right, so we're going to, yes.
Okay. Appointments, number ten.
We don't wanna necessarily, I know we don't have it in front of us, but we don't wanna recommend amendment to the civil fingerprinting bylaw, or do you wanna wait till it gets put on the list for next week?
Oh, no, we have, don't we have?
We can, I think it's in there.
That's the policy.
The first reading.
We can have the first reading of it, so it's set up.
No, 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 that's the policy. But in order to incorporate carnival workers, it has to be a new article to amend the bylaw to include those other parties.
I thought that's what Greg just talked about.
Right.
That's exactly.
So are we gonna wait to make a recommendation on that? I know it's not in front of us right now.
I think we wanted to see the list of what we wanted to include, right?
Yeah, the problem is, we have to do multiple readings, so I thought we wanted to.
No, 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 that's the policy. That's the policy.
Oh, I'm getting confused.
We're gonna amend the bylaw to include other categories, which includes carnival.
Okay.
But we wanted to take a look at what the list is now, and then consider what else we wanna add.
We asked the chief to come back with his recommendations for the.
Right, we're supposed to provide on the list, that's right.
All right, we're gonna work with the chief. So it's gonna be.
If you're going to placeholder, right.
Okay.
Number ten, appointments.
Mr. Chairman, I move to place a nomination. The following names for appointments as members of the Historical Commission for a term to expire on December 31st, 2015. There are three openings. One, Les Masterson, 291 Park Street. Kathleen M. Benz, 10 Oscars Way. Christopher B. Hayden, 20 Swan Pond.
Second.
Motion in second. Any discussion?
Just that I did speak to Les and to Chris. I wasn't able to get Kathleen, but I did have to look over their application, so they're excited about training. See if I can recommend them.
All right, I'll just add. Well, okay, we'll take a vote. I don't wanna talk about historical commission, but, okay. All in favor? We, well.
So we'll discuss the Historical Commission.
Well, I believe that, right. I received a call, calls concerning the article Tricentennial in 2013, and a historian of North Reading has called me a couple of times to discuss it. And I guess part of the issue has been, no one's picked up the ball and run with that, and I think it's due to the fact that there's been, I'm happy to see that there's appointments this evening, because there's been very few members. I don't know how many current members there are, but there was a lack of membership in the Historical Commission, so she was hoping that someone would pick up the ball and run with, doing some sort of celebration of celebrations for the North Reading Tricentennial. Happy to see the appointments, and I hope the new members will engage the current members in putting something together.
I think there was some earlier activity of trying to get the Friends of the Council nation involved in that.
Maybe so.
Back, a number of months ago. I don't know if it's gained, I doubt if it's gained any traction.
As of Sunday, I don't believe it has. So I'm in Congress to see if there's new membership here, and I think I'd like to see them put an effort into having some, at least a celebration on behalf of the Tricentennial.
Actually, you know, we can combine a few things here. I mean, you've got 25 years from the taking, from the taking of Hillview this year. This other celebration, if we can combine some parties together to celebrate one or two things at the same time, it might make it a little bit easier and get a little more evolving.
Maybe Hillview Commission should work with the Historical Commission, and we can have a celebration at the Hillview.
Well, the Hillview will probably be a pretty good venue, but my guess is, knowing the Hillview Commission, is that they would probably be more than willing to embrace the idea, but not take it on. Talk with Mr. Lee about getting the facility.
Steve, you second that?
Steve seconded.
Yes, I did, yep.
Does it have to be roll call, or can we just?
They didn't have it as a roll call.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's four zero one, I'm set you. I was waiting. We gotta move along. Water Commission?
Mr. Chairman, I move to place a nomination of the following name for appointment as member of the Water Commission for a term to expire on December 31st, 2015. There are three openings. Stephen Corielli, Jr., 49 Abbott Road.
Second.
Motion in second. Any discussion?
I reached out to Mr. Corielli and left him a message, but I didn't hear back from him. That was today, so.
Just overall, I'm glad to see that there is some interest in joining commissions and committees. I think we've had a dearth of willingness to get involved recently, so I'm happy to see this. Anything further?
I think it's great.
All in favor?
Aye.
Recycling Committee.
Mr. Chairman, I move to place a nomination of the following name for appointments as member of the Recycling Committee for an indefinite term. There's one opening. Kristen Scandora, 19 Freedom Drive.
Second.
Motion in second. Any discussion?
Just again, I called her and welcomed her aboard.
A little premature.
I thanked her for offering to serve.
All right, and motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
I guess it wasn't.
So, yeah.
Item eleven. Yeah, let's go back to item three, minutes. Good idea, Mr. Foley.
Are we not gonna talk about?
Mr. Chairman.
Try to go in some simple.
Oh, okay. All right, I just wanna make sure we're not gonna go bypassing. Budget.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the March 18th, 2013 regular session minutes as written.
Second.
Motion in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Ananamous.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the April 2nd, 2013 regular session minutes as written.
Second.
Motion in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Ananamous. Anyone object to discussing the potential sale of Swan Pond land?
Another night.
The only comment I have is, Mr. Vali Konas, I looked at what the assessor had provided to us. It still looks to me that that may be assessed value and not marketable land value, because I was surprised at what she evaluated it at.
As was I.
Yeah, I was shocked.
I was shocked. I was shocked also.
That's beautiful, that's a beautiful property up there.
I thought there was a dig in missing. Well, keep in mind, there's no infrastructure there, so, you know, raw land, constant infrastructure. I think it's still a little low, but.
Skip over thirteen, because Mr. Foley will get to leave early, because he can't anticipate that. So I'll go fourteen draft, Civil Fingerprint Bylaw.
No. No, we were just having an executive session discussion about it.
Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt the first reading of the Civil Fingerprinting Policy for Town Issued Licenses.
I'll second that.
Motion in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
It's just the way of discussion, we might wanna let the public know that we need to read policy, put policy in place in order for the police department to enforce what we wanna have done here, or why we implemented it. And that tis the season where we have a lot of outside vendors coming door to door, trying to sell stuff to us. And this is, we accepted this bylaw, and we now have to accept this policy to implement it, so that the police department can hold these people accountable, get them identified, fingerprinted, and the town will have a better idea as to who's actually coming into the community and knocking door to door and soliciting whatever there is they're soliciting for.
Right, if we don't adopt this policy, all the police department can do now is fingerprint and do a statewide check, not a national check. Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Ananamous.
FY 2014 budget update, number sixteen.
Oh, the handout that I just gave you was just to summarize the key recommendations to balance the 2014 budget. As you know, we've been working toward balancing the budget for the better part of the last several months, and I'm happy to report that we are there. We do have a balanced budget on the municipal side, but it's based upon a number of key recommendations that were presented to the financial planning team this morning, and they're shown here on this sheet. And really, the purpose of the discussion this evening is to get into the revenue side of the budget and really understand where those have come from. As you know, the next week's meeting is the budget hearing, and if you agree with this, then the budget hearing will be predicated on the assumptions that are here. If for some reason you don't, then we go back and we start over again. So the first assumption that was utilized was to use the House Ways and Means state estimates that resulted in a revenue gain of $96,203. And we're fairly certain at this point that those numbers now represent what we consider to be the low watermark for both Chapter 70 and unrestricted government aid. And if you look at the spreadsheet that was in your packet, it kind of dovetails with these numbers that are here.
You can't operate off of the governor's budget, because.
No.
No.
No, we never even made that assumption at the start. The second key assumption was to slightly increase our motor vehicle excise tax revenues by $28,000. The budget is still below what we would have collected as of June 30th, 2012, so we're comfortable in increasing it slightly to close the budget gap that we have, and that's what this accomplishes. Number three, utilizing 100% of the estimated state cherry sheet reimbursement for veterans' benefits. So we reimbursed 75% of every dollar expended on veterans' benefits. We're due to receive $145,128, and as you know, that's one of the pieces of the budget that's increasing at a very substantial rate. What we wanna do is we wanna use 100% of that reimbursement and apply to offsetting our 2014 veterans' benefit costs. So that's what we've done in terms of the budget, and we've made that as a major assumption in our budget balancing actions.
Excuse me, just in the past, we've just allowed it to flow into general fund?
It's been divided up on the 67 school, 33% town share, and what we're doing is we're allocating 100% of it to offset the veterans' benefit costs. That's what the purpose of this is.
And the benefits, Steve, come in on the cherry sheet.
Right.
It's not in the tax recap at the end of the year, and it's always a year and a half behind.
The good news is, the Mass Municipal Association, just to talk a little bit about it, is aware of this issue. I brought it up at a recent meeting that we had with them, and they're surprised to hear about this, not only in North Reading, but in a number of towns, and they talked about a more timely reimbursement process. We reimbursed two years after we incurred the expense. And when you're spending $30,000 or $40,000 a year, it's really not a big deal. When your veterans' benefits approach a third of a million dollars, it becomes a big deal. So the state is looking at more timely reimbursement to cities and towns. The, we've talked a little bit previously about the action resulting from the health insurance budget, a 3% increase, and truing up the enrollment statistics will save us about $287,000. That's money that we're not budgeting and we're not spending. It's, again, a combination of the drop from 5% to 3%, but also equally as important is looking and analyzing what our run rate is for this year, and then extrapolating that for the remainder of this year, and then assuming that we'll have a similar run rate in 2014. And again, we're able to save substantial monies doing that. Talked previously under number five about the $214,743 for the COPS fast grant repayment and the 15% longevity benefit. Number six is utilizing $59,325 from the Solid Waste Stabilization Fund to offset costs in the Department of Public Works. So we're not adding to the DPW. What we're doing is we're simply substituting how we fund certain items by using the Solid Waste Stabilization Fund versus simply raisin appropriating.
Just in relation to that, so again, the Solid Waste Stabilization Fund, my understanding, is we established it to do just that, keep rates stable, build up a little bit of funds, so if tipping rates go up a little bit, we don't have to go up in our rates to the homeowners for a while. But what we're doing now is identifying $59,000 worth of expenditures within the DPW operating budget that were not previously allocated to solid waste management.
Correct. And what we'll also do as a companion to that is we'll look at this year's solid waste budget, and if there's a surplus, rather than letting that surplus flow to free cash, we earmark it to go back into the Solid Waste Stabilization, and we're trying to treat it as a pseudo enterprise fund, because it's really money that comes from fees, and as a result of being fees, it should be retained within the solid waste account.
Okay, that's what I'm, if we're gonna do this.
Then you shouldn't be using it for other.
Well, we're keeping it within the DPW, but it's.
But is it in direct relation to the cost of managing the solid waste program?
Yes.
Based on its allocation of time of sport health, DPL, the heavy director.
Support staff.
The support staff.
Yes.
How did you arrive at that particular number?
We're utilizing the remaining balance that's in that account.
Oh, so you didn't tie it back to, you didn't, yeah, you didn't tie it back to cost. DPW costs are related to solid waste.
We just... We did, we did this last year. So this is the second year that we've done it, and last year was the identical drawdown. So I can go back and do the analysis and get you the detail in terms of how we got to that number. But the assumption that we used last year holds true for this year. And I apologize for not getting you that detail.
What do you mean, hold true? I mean, if you did it last year, that means you increased the cost, I don't know what...
Reallocated the cost.
No, reallocated.
Reallocated the cost of DPW, which was normally in the general operating budget. But you say, what does it cost us to operate and oversee the management of waste management? You say $60,000 plus.
Right, so you're saying it increased again another $60,000 from last year?
No, because remember, those costs remain stable. The funding sources disappeared, and what we're doing is looking to continue the funding source that we established in this year's budget to carry forward to next year. So we're not increasing the solid waste operation budget by this amount. What we're simply doing is we're keeping the costs the same. We're continuing to use this source of funds to basically pay for those costs.
Basically, something with water indirect costs?
Outside of the contract. Outside of the contract, so the indirect cost of overseeing the management of that program.
Yes.
Okay, I just want to ensure that if we're going to be doing that, that if there is a surplus, it does go back into the solid waste stabilization fund and not the free cash or general fund.
We'll make sure that happens.
I'd like to see all that $59,000's drive.
I'll do that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a quick question? This recommendation is based on a level-funded request or is level services?
It would be based upon the level services request, not level funded. Number seven is to draw an additional $42,000 from the ambulance reserve account to pay for costs in the fire department EMS expenses. So the original budget was based upon a $265,000 draw from the ambulance reserve to pay for costs in the fire department. As you know, based upon the budget presentation that was done here back in March, the fire department and the fire chief both indicated that the rate of revenue at this point will bring in revenues of about $600,000 for this fiscal year. So we are utilizing a small portion of that to balance out the budget, but certainly not to the extent that we would at all jeopardize what our costs are going forward. Number eight is utilizing a small portion of our bond premiums toward the budget. The bond premiums don't have anything to do with the high school project. These are bond premiums that have been from borrowings that we've done in the past for municipal purposes. We have about $99,000 in the bond premiums account. The remaining portion is not budgeted and is not programmed as an expense at this point. So those are monies that will be available for the October town meeting. We do not anticipate spending them at this time. And then the last piece is to increase the water department indirect costs. I think Mr. Clark talked about that a little bit tonight and provided you with the detail that documents what the indirect costs are for the water department. The majority of those costs are associated with the payment of employee benefits. And as the pension costs, Medicare costs rise for those employees, we in turn bill the water department, which then repays the general fund by an amount of money. And an analysis of the indirect costs indicates that there's about $18,000 additional monies that we can earmark toward the town's budget for fiscal 2014.
Anyone have any questions? Chris?
So I guess I have to make some assumptions of what this means. So does this mean that what was presented to us over the past several weeks includes things like the part-time billing assistant? Includes the 8.3% increase for fuel? Include, um... Does it not, so it does not include a school resource officer? Does it not include the money for parks and rec? I'm not 100% sure what this is.
Yes. Yes, to all of those. And as I said, when we go through the budget hearing next week, we'll have all of that information laid out with the board in terms of what the increases are in the budget that were presented that are within these dollar amounts. Yes.
Well, I just have one issue that I'd like to bring up that probably needs to be addressed tonight because, you know, the $15,900 that I'd asked the board to consider for the parks and rec is something that, if it's possible to get just a kind of an idea where you guys stand on that because the college kids are getting out of school, high school kids are getting ready to get out of school, and they're all looking for jobs. And right now, parks and rec people are trying to tell the young college kids, "Don't go look for other jobs because there may be a chance we can bring you back this year after we've already told them."
Well...
So any guidance we can give them?
Sure. Based upon the discussion that was had, financial planning team meeting this morning, we've asked the town administrator, the finance director to, and they've been trying to do this, to sit down with parks and recs to determine what their needs are. Because the school committee reported that parks and rec had gone to their athletic subcommittee and indicated they would not be hiring as many employees, summer employees. So it confused Austin's financial planning team, those that sat through their budget hearing, to say that $16,000 was going to add so many summer employees. That's one. Two, I got a better understanding as to their operation as an enterprise fund, and they have these retained earnings that are about $84,000. So I'm not clear as to whether or not they need or should actually receive the $16,000, but I'm waiting to hear back. And like I said, I know that finance director indicated they were looking to sit down with parks and rec, but they've been unable to coordinate. Time to meet. I'm hoping that's going to be done by the end of the week. That's the update as I know it as of this morning. I don't know if you want to add?
No, you said exactly what was discussed. And it seems like recreation has basically said, "Well, we're very busy with enrollments and everything. We don't have time to get together." So do you have any influence? They need to get together.
Yeah, because they reached out to me saying they needed an answer, so I find it kind of odd. All right, thank you for sharing that. So just to make sure I understand, so next week, we're going to get into the nitty-gritty on the entire budget.
Next week, the purpose of the budget hearing is to review all the expense details associated with the budget. But I didn't want to begin preparing that document at that presentation unless the board is in agreement with the revenue assumptions that we put forth this year.
And the revenue projections are aimed at basically covering the budget as with our recommendations plus what the board had asked to be put back into the budget, correct?
Right.
Wait a minute, that's a different answer.
I don't know if that's...
That's what he said he's covered. Now, it still brings up the issue of...
No, because I don't believe this includes the additional part-time employee for building maintenance.
That's correct.
So I know that's one item. It's not here.
Okay. The increase in the fuel isn't there?
It is.
I assume so.
The $200,000 the school needed is... Because last time we discussed anything when we got in budget, there was a $200,000.
Yeah, the school budget is funded.
That's covered where?
If you...
Well, it's covered in the revenue plan.
Right.
In the split that they get to...
I sent out, I believe, after the last financial planning team, the revenue update.
Okay.
The second page, and this has been updated again. So you have this in your packet. This shows how school budget got to a balanced budget.
Okay.
If you don't have a prior, let me know. I can send it to you.
And the school resource officer is or is not?
Is.
Is.
That was a function of not adding to police budget as I understood it. It was within their appropriation.
That's correct. Conservation commission?
In.
So the...
But there are four positions that are not slated to be filled. Well, I shouldn't say that. Why don't you explain it? We have four openings in town hall. How is that accounted for in this budget?
We've made some assumptions in terms of bringing on employees at a lower rate of pay. So when you receive the budget detail, some of the positions that are open right now that are being filled, well, senior staff is either retired or left. We've rolled back the salaries. But we've budgeted for each of those positions in the 2014 budget.
So you budgeted to fill those positions?
I did.
So what are we trying to achieve next week then, when we go over the budget? Are we supposed to hash it out tonight or are we hash it out next week? I don't want to waste any more time. It's 11:30.
Again?
Okay.
I think the revenue side is the purpose of tonight's discussion. And then the expense side will be next week's meeting, the public hearing that you have on the budget.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So I'm okay with the revenue side?
Well, I just have one question on the revenue side. You know, I brought this up during the budget hearing with the Department of Health. We had some revenue in there because that influenza program that they had was around $45,000 in revenue, and we decided not to do it again. I still don't understand why we would give up an opportunity that was creating that much revenue. And I'm just curious to get your read on it. You know, it's $45,000 of money now we don't have, and we just decided not to do it anymore. Do you remember that discussion, the budget hearing?
I'm sorry, I was...
Do you remember the health department? I had brought up the fact that, yes, the influenza program they were doing, they...
They chose not to bill for it?
They chose not to even run the program. Seeing that brought in about $45,000 in revenue. So now all of a sudden, we're not doing it this year. No budget cut, no budget changes or anything, but we're just not generating this revenue. I don't know. No one else seems to be questioning it, so maybe I'm the one that's not understanding it. That's the only issue I have with regards to revenue.
Well, perhaps Greg could just check and find out what the, check with the Department of Health, what their plan is for the, what they're covering in the budget. Didn't we pass the revolving fund forum?
We did. That got passed, town meeting a year ago.
Yeah.
And now, you know, now all of a sudden, we're not going to... A program that was creating some money has gone away, so I'm just a little confused.
I guess, how do you know it's gone away?
Well, because I asked the question at the budget hearing to Mr. Fair. I asked him, I said, "I didn't see it in your, I don't see it in your revenue plan." And he said, "Yeah, well, no, we're not going to do that."
Well, it wouldn't be, he doesn't have a revenue plan that would come back into the general fund, I would imagine, as free cash.
Yeah, but it was a program he was running that generated that much money.
Right, well, and then he wanted the revolving fund so that the money raised for that could be put into the fund which were then funded future programs. So in fact, I thought that the seed money for that would actually come from the program that they were running.
I'll go back and ask the question.
The influenza vaccine?
It was.
I thought he ran it and just had it billed for it. I thought that's what I had heard. Maybe I was mistaken.
Well, let's go get a clarification.
Well, I'd like to get some clarification on it.
All right, we can go to Pine Forest Park, so discuss and sign.
Yep, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to recuse myself as I've done in the past, seeing that I have a family member who has an interest in this issue.
Do we have to appoint a clerk?
You're it.
No.
Who to appoint Mr. Prisco?
I was on that end of the table last night. It was perfect.
You have vast experience.
I got a motion to appoint a temporary clerk, area general clerk.
Mr. Masary, second?
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against, aye.
We're appointing Mr. Prisco as acting clerk. I made the motion.
Three to one.
Seconded it.
It passes.
It was nearly unanimous. I think Mr. Prisco voted no.
He did.
Okay.
One upstitching.
One upstitching.
Do you want to lead the discussion, Mr. Belany, or do you want to lead it? Seems like I went through it. It seems like you got it wrong. Go, Mr. K.
I can help.
Okay.
So you have the agreements. They've been signed by Mr. Petracino. And if you approve, they will be transmitted to the town of Andover for their signature at their meeting, their next meeting, which I believe is this week. The board had requested two substantial changes in the document. On page three, there was language that the board requested that the subdivision developer will not be using local roads for construction vehicles and accessing the subdivision during construction, and that language is here. And then also, on page five, under the billing and collection, there was language in the agreement that assumed that there would be individual water meters in each home. And so the language has been changed so that there will be a single water meter, which will be installed with the coordination of the North Reading Water Department. And the homeowners association shall be responsible for payments to the town of North Reading. So the language in there relative to individual homes, meters and such has been removed and defaulted back to the language that was in the settlement agreement that you approved with Mr. Petracino previously.
Again, if they want to meter those homes, it's up to them.
Yeah.
Are we ready or not?
There's just one issue that I saw. I don't know if it's that significant, but if we turn to paragraph three on page five, it reads under billing and collection, "North Reading shall be solely responsible to bill for and collect all sums due for provisions, provision of water to residents of the sub..." Okay. I guess it's okay. Now that I read it out loud. All set?
I'm good, yeah.
Motion?
Is that moved?
Motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, well, we are official. Mr. Chairman, I move to sign the inter-ministerial agreement between the town of Andover, the town of North Reading, and Angelo Petracino, trustee of Reliance Realty Trust for Water Services to Pine Forest Park subdivision.
Motion, second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
I'm going to vote no because I don't like doing business with a gentleman. But if the majority of the board goes along with it, I will sign the agreement along with the rest of the members of the board. I'm voting no.
I hear you. I'm going to vote yes.
I know.
No, if we all took that tack, though, we wouldn't be approving this thing. Weird, and it's, you know, I'd like to vote no too.
Voting no puts us in...
I voted no before.
And I voted no before, too.
And I agree, and I don't disagree that this is the best deal that we could enter into with Mr. Petracino in handling the situation.
Do what you got to do. All right.
Any further?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Three, one, one abstention motion carries. Mr. Fordy, you can come back in.
Thank you.
Town administrators report. Almost there. Almost.
The indoor air quality assessment report was received from the Mass. Department of Public Health. This was a study that was performed back in 2012 of Town Hall. The intent of the report was to respond to longstanding employee concerns over poor indoor air quality and that this air quality is the cause of cancer and other health issues. I did go through the report, and in it, there's no evidence of any health concerns being linked to Town Hall. The report does, however, make a number of recommendations. Those recommendations are sent out on appointments to the Town Hall HVAC systems and general housekeeping. I've given you just a copy of the summary page, because what I want to do is I do want to discuss the report with department heads and with employees before it becomes a public document. It's one of those things that you... I don't want to read about it or see it posted on the news before it has an opportunity to be presented to employees. So I will upload it and have a copy of it so that the board can review, but there really are no surprises, and this is something that we've been looking for for a long time. Number two, the board has a copy of the letter from Dick Kingston, who is the board's independent auditor, concerning compliance with the accounting standards 114. You have a copy of the letter, and please contact Mr. Kingston if you have any questions. Talked a little bit earlier about the amount of potential Chapter 90 funds. Seven hundred forty-seven thousand, five hundred seventy-six dollars, which would be wonderful if we were to receive that, but again, it's predicated upon enactment of the governor's transportation bond bill and new revenues. And without those two things, that money will not materialize. Now, before, you have a letter from Representative Jones, who has written to you about the status of legislation prohibiting insurers from making direct payments to patients for municipal ambulance services. This is in regard to the presentation that was made by the fire chief on the budget, and one of the concerns that he had expressed about the town perhaps seeing a decrease in municipal ambulance revenues going forward. And Representative Jones has pledged to keep you apprised of the status of both bills as they go before Joint Committee in the near future. So I think that's important to note. You have a copy of communication from the Executive Office of Public Safety about several law enforcement grants. I forwarded it off to the police chief in consideration. It looks like there's some really good opportunities that are out there. And then on number six, which is the last item that I have on my report, is there is a copy of the forest cutting plan for the Phase Two timber harvest on municipal land up in the area of Swan Pond. You will recall Phase One, which was completed in 2012, yielded about five thousand dollars in revenue to the town. The plan, again, is to sell wood products and also promote long-term management of the town's forests. It's important to note that before any cutting activity takes place, the butters will be notified. Be done by certified mail, so that we expect that the plan will be implemented and the forest cutting will begin late spring, after May first. So again, the opportunity is to bring in money from sale of forest products. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Vali.
Thank you, board members.
All the new business, Mr. Fordy?
Just a couple of things. Mr. Chairman, I just want to reiterate your earlier sentiments regarding the tragedy of the marathon, my condolences to the family of the four members who lost family members. Also, best wishes for the... All the individuals who were injured, and our thanks to our three officers who participated in the capture of that devil. I also want to give my condolences to the family of Timothy Shalou, young man, eighteen years old, senior at Penn Green, who was unfortunately killed in a car accident on the way home from his prom about a week and a half ago. On a lighter note, congratulations to Coach Carey on his seven-hundredth win. That's a huge feat. That's unbelievable. I want to wish him the best. Wish best of luck to Sunrise Bagels. As you all know, after twenty-one years in the town of North Reading, they are moving to Wilmington. And lastly, I believe there's a candidate's night tomorrow night. Is that on?
Correct.
Tomorrow night, seven-thirty here, there's a candidate's night. We're fortunate enough that our two members that are up for reelection are running again. I want to thank them both for offering to do this again for another three years. And people should come out and at least listen to what they have to say, but more importantly, listen to what the candidates for school committee have to say, considering the fact we had no candidates and now have five. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Four?
Four.
Sorry. My bad. Thanks, Bob. You never know, my wife. No, I'm like...
Close enough. Four, five. Thank you, Mr. Fordy.
That's it. Thank you.
Mr. Ollery?
I'm going to echo most of what Mr. Fordy had to say, and also the chairman, as you put it very well at the beginning of the meeting in relation to the tragedy that occurred on Patriots Day in Boston. And again, to our public safety officials from federal government on down to right here in North Reading local level, what an exceptional effort that was put forth to secure the area. And first responders were unbelievable, the citizens that were there, runners, people running into harm's way in order to assist other people was inspiring, if nothing else. Again, the outcome is tragic, but the effort that was put forth by everybody, and particularly law enforcement, was fantastic. Again, to the Shalou family, Kathy and Stan and Kate, my condolences on their loss of Truly heartbreaking for the community, and once again, our condolences to them. Again, Coach Carey, seven hundred wins is unbelievable. I can honestly say I think I was there for each one of the century marks from one hundred on up, but what an outstanding accomplishment, and he's got a few more to go, for sure. He's got a terrific team this year, again, to help him continue to set the mark. And I think some sort of congratulatory recommendation, you know, from the board acknowledging it should be... Some sort of a citation should be given on behalf of the board, signed by the chairman or all of us, if that particular case, we can come up with something to get to him. I think we should do that. And again, I know we have a meeting Monday night, but again, election is next Tuesday. I think the presentation by the town clerk this evening was very informative. We've got two elections simultaneously being held. Please come out and participate. As Mr. Fordy pointed out, we now have a race for school committee with some high interest and some great candidates. And the process of getting someone elected is not going to be as daunting as you think it might be as far as a sticker or write-in campaign. As explained by the town clerk tonight, just come in, write the person's name down as best you can spell it, and it will be counted. So please come out and participate. And once again, to my two colleagues who start seeking reelection, thank you again for participating and putting forth the time and the effort. It's really appreciated, and I congratulate you early. You're both early, and I'm going to make a prediction that you're both going to be a shoe-in. And although people are going to get in the mood now, write-ins, you know, you might have a little bit of a challenge there, but I think you're still going to be okay. On that, Mr. Chairman, well said. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. Ollery. Mr. Prisco?
A couple of questions, but the first thing I want to mention is reiterate what you had said earlier to Mr. Delaney's. Hopefully, the public's listening. I doubt it at this time, but maybe you'll get the transcript. We really would like to get the word out to the community about participating in our meeting next Monday night, and for those especially that had any part in running it, running in the marathon, part of the first responding team, part of the assistance in any way, I think it's really important to try to reach out to all those people that were touched by this event. I think it's great that we're going to take the opportunity here to try to recognize all of them, so I hope we get great participation in that. My question is, Greg, on the downtown gazebo, why do we... Why don't we fund that? The landscaping and the painting and all that stuff? Why is that out of the operating budget for the town? Why is that all private funds? I'm just curious.
It would have been a group that would have stepped forward at the time that the gazebo would have been constructed?
Okay.
That was my understanding. You're talking about like the landscaping around it and such?
Yeah, you know, Mr. Norton, he puts so much time... And he puts so much of his own money into it.
I know.
And it wasn't... I mean, I know we're hurting for money, but geez, I mean, this is our downtown gazebo, and I know he struggles every year to get the resources, not only financially, but physical resources, people to help him. You know, no offense to Mr. Norton, if you're listening at home, but he's not getting any younger. That landscaping isn't getting any easier and getting it painted and things like that.
Of course.
I don't know what the board thinks, but I never... I didn't know that we didn't pay for that. The town doesn't pay for any of that.
That's very true.
So I was a little shocked on that one.
If I can just...
Please.
Tag onto that. I'm surprised at that, but also, I think we pulled those shrubs out.
Yes.
Someone pulled those shrubs out.
We did promise to...
We promised to replace those shrubs.
Yes, we did.
I think it's going on two years now.
It was next to my...
I'm sorry.
No, no, that's great. I'm glad you...
I thought you were moving on to another issue.
No. And whatever investment we said we would make to replace those, I think we should make sure we include it this growing season right now. I want to send out a congratulations to the Reading and North Reading Chamber Commerce selections for North Reading. John Murphy was Citizen of the Year. I think that's a fantastic choice. The firefighter of the year was Paul Hardeman, who passed away in December twelfth. I think the Fire Department guys did a great job selecting him. The police selected, recommended police officer, retired police officer Kyle Berg, so congratulations to him as well. Now, his choice. The last thing I had, Greg, was a question for you, is do you remember the house at the end of Sandra Lane, Strawberry and Sandra Lane, about two years ago? Didn't the town take that over? I know we went in, we had to board it up. It was unsafe.
It's been torn down.
It is. Did the town take that property over?
No.
No, we didn't.
It was... The taxes were being paid by the bank.
Okay.
So we didn't have any opportunity to take it.
So any of the expenses we incurred, like removing the fence, taking things down like that?
We put a lien on the property.
And okay, so we get that reimbursed at the sale.
So we file a lien, and we've done it in a couple of other locations around town that as we bought up and secure property.
Okay.
We file a lien to guarantee that money comes back.
Yeah, because I noticed the property is sold, and I'm just curious, do we actually get reimbursed?
I suspect if you're torn down and they're going to build a new house.
Yes. So at the time that there's a transaction, when they go through the municipal lien procedure, we'll acknowledge the fact that there's a lien.
Great.
Has to be satisfied before the property gets sold.
Thanks for explaining that. That's all I have.
Mr. Masary?
Well, due to the lateness of the hour, I'm not going to repeat what all my fellow board members have said, all of which are very, very important, and I thank you for your introduction at the beginning of the meeting. Just one thing I do want to mention is that the Friends of the Council on Aging are running their townwide yacht sale this Saturday. I think there's about sixty-eight participants that have signed up, and it's going to run from eight AM to two PM. The maps are available at Town Hall, the library, riyas, and a number of other places, which I don't have a list of. And it's going to... There will also be tables set up at Town Hall and the gymnasium for some people that have signed up to conduct their sales here. And that would also include the food pantry where there have been donations made for their table. So everyone's welcome to participate, and the ladies that have put together the program put a lot of effort into creating this map, and on the back of the map, it identifies by each location the kinds of things that they're going to have out for us. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Masary.
I do echo all the comments of all my fellow board members. I just want to give the public a way to contact us, to provide us with the names of the people that we should recognize next Monday night, and I'm sure Mr. Terros is going to put it in. I would hope he's going to put it in the paper this week. But please contact me with anyone you know who fits in any of those categories, participated in any way through my town email address, sdelaney@northreadingma.gov, and also call me on my cellphone, and I'll give that out to 617-620-9276. We really want this to be a ceremony that's well-attended, and also, we want to make sure we recognize all North Reading residents that had some participation in the tragic events of last week. And that's all I have. Thank you.
And if they can't get hold of you, Town Administrator's Office, Selectman's Office.
Sure. Just, we want to capture. We don't want to lose anyone else. It's that important.
Did everybody get this correspondence?
Yes.
Is that the only one? Everybody did? Everybody got one? Okay. Greg, did you get all this correspondence that we got in relation to the playground, Park Street?
I did get that one.
The doggy park?
I did get that one.
Okay.
The concerned resident.
Oh, says the neighborhood.
Says the neighborhood, but, you know, the neighborhood.
But I think it's important to note that, if I recall, Parks and Rec have kind of abandoned...
We'll look at any of the safety issues that are...
Abandoned that park?
I didn't get that one.
You didn't get that?
No.
Which one's this?
This is, you know, the old doggy park.
The former doggy park.
The neighborhood. Some correspondence of which I got a copy.
There are dogs again?
No, 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 just the condition of...
Oh, the condition, yeah.
Thorns and other issues that they consider to be safety issues that they'd like addressed.
Yeah. But just to remind you...
When we closed the park, Parks and Rec kind of abandoned the area, which I didn't agree with, but...
No, they did what you asked them to do. You told them to keep it mowed, and that's all they do. They just mow it. They don't do anything else.
There's some other issues, though, as far as overgrowth and some holes or something like that that maybe they can... Someone could address. Again, unless we decide on it.
I think it...
Okay. And then, did everybody get the one in relation to the Pub and Hillview not being reopened?
Yes.
My own personal feeling on that is that it should have been reopened. It should be reopened. So I think if that's the consensus, maybe we should relay that through liaison to the Hillview Commission.
I'll pass it along.
But if that's the consensus, it's my opinion. I don't know about anybody else. And then in relation to Kitty starting up their cruise land again, did anybody get that, Joe?
Yeah.
And again, I think generally, the building inspector handles...
They'd be proactive in terms of just sending a friendly reminder to the proprietor. The resident who raised those issues has been very friendly with us, so we want to be respectful to him.
Just a quick question. Who can make it Wednesday night? Right now, I can't. The RMLD meeting, anybody? Bob, can you make it?
Yeah, I put it down. I can't make it.
I might be able to.
Yeah, I put it down. I hope to.
What?
It's going to be at their...
Where am I going to meet?
The Sullivan.
Oh, I can't.
Yes, right.
Yeah. That's all?
So moved?
Motion? Second? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. Couldn't wait for any minutes.
Pick somebody.